We can talk all this, move to order. Andrew decides he will be here, but he will be a few minutes late. I'm trying to think of what I have here. I honestly don't know how all of that works.
They basically just have to say they need to rewind on the thing.
Yeah, that's how the statute reads it.
We just have to record in minutes.
I would report, yeah, I would definitely report that in minutes. And by statute, the president of the council automatically becomes a member. And she would give it to me, I mean, sign the release office for the position of mayor.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
There's no, there's no set time for when. The next step is for the mayor with the advice and consent of the council to appoint the council member. And then, and that advice and consent means that you can talk about it. You should deliberate about who might do it, who might not do the best bit. And then she would make an appointment, and then you all would have to vote to confirm that appointment. So that place would have to get these two votes. And if it was a two, two ties, we would pass the tiebreaker vote.
What's like a timeframe like, how quickly do we need to appoint someone?
I would say you want to have it done in the first weeks. Like, you don't have to do it tonight. Then after the deposition is still, then you have to move to the council and move president.
So, so I'm telling them there's like no president or council?
Well, I, I think the statute actually says in the absence of the president of the council, they're elected temporary president of the council. I don't, I didn't really think about that, but you probably should. I think it's pretty widely the truth.
I love that statement.
We need to like, we need to make a motion to rething about Justin's resignation and appoint Katie.
It's just been, it's just been noted.
Okay, so then can I nominate Kathy Martin as the president of council?
I could second that.
The temporary one?
I mean, I don't think, I don't. Even if you thought normally still, right, two to one.
Right.
But that way we'll know what hurts.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Looks like we have two members in our audience tonight.
Pretty quick. I'm currently on the project we started doing, and I've newly appointed. Little backstory, we had 25,000 out of their budget last year. And I started hearing things about the Effingham site closing. So now that I got on the board, I found out that the commissioner that had been fulfilling that had told them since the last year we funded them from Harpa, that we weren't going to fund them anymore, and that they wouldn't get back on the ad void taxes. So, which, it hadn't been voted on or anything like that. I'm trying to just give a brief backstory. So anyway, since I got on the board, I asked that they not, because they were at the point where they were gonna vote to shut the Effingham facility down. And if there would have been no funding, that would have also eliminated all rural delivery meals outside of the city limits of the agency. So I did approach the other two commissioners and said I didn't think that that was correct, and asked, as a preliminary budget placement that we keep it at least at the 100,000 that we budgeted for last year. They committed to 95,000. So I don't know whether that's going to be close enough to keep them all open, or whether there'll be some, some cuts. But then in the meantime, I got a call from former mayor Obrad saying that he had been perceiving about the closure. And he was asking if the city of Effingham would shut it down. And so I don't know if that had been, anything had been discussed among anyone else, or whether that was. And so, and then it surprised me, well, I found out about his resignation, so I'm kind of like, okay, that would definitely help if there was more funding. I'm not, I, I'm just going to present that case, and then you guys can discuss it among yourselves. And if you're interested, please contact me if you're interested in doing any company.
Oh, that's just for the seniors then?
And I didn't know really how to approach it, especially since Justin had made the contact me. It's like, it's a couple days, oh, I heard that he was resigning.
But what's our timeframe on this?
I think that since we'd committed to the 95,000, that they are, that the project concern board would probably not be able to shut it down. But their, their budget runs from, different than ours, because I think it goes, or the current funding will go through all this.
Yeah.
So anything like that would be, we're definitely, we're going to have to have some answers in probably a month or two. My next board meeting will be the first week of April with them, and I'm sure that committing to the 95,000 will not make a, I don't think you'll have a quick vote on it to close it, once it's like, getting yourself a parliament, I guess you would have to say, of the 95,000. So.
The 95,000 starts in August of next year, or?
No, that's their fiscal budget. So they're looking at things.
We're not talking about the current year, we're talking about next year.
They were going to shut it down immediately. Because of the threat of being cut completely out from county funding. Which that had never been discussed or anything, so I just kind of wondered that. I didn't want them to shut down on the assumption they were going to be kind of.
I mean, I didn't talk with that all the time. I didn't know anything about them, you know, shutting down. My question is, is why is it that Atchison can still keep their side in Effingham? What I understand is Effingham was going to be the only one on that.
Correct, because they have more numbers in there, and that's basically, it's their, I mean, they have the numbers, they have bigger facility, and then that's the fourth decision, it would be the board, and I would say it would be more heavily occupied by the city of Atchison.
Yeah, and that's, that's a whole nother subject.
Does the city pitch in for them at all, the seniors?
I don't believe the city of Atchison, well, the city of Atchison provides the facility, the building, and, and.
At least they have rent on our. I mean, town, town, this country has paid rent on this too. Because if we have it, well, if we have it, but if we have it for any kind of repulsion or anything.
Oh, we, we are public guests to rent.
Yeah.
If you, if it's a non-project concern meeting, yeah, they have to pay rent. But the project concern themselves owns this building, and if they decided to shut it down, make it sell the building, or, you know, it's in their control. But I, I didn't know how really, how to approach this matter because of the resignation being approached. I just want to bring it to your attention, because now, I'm sure you're going to be getting the calls if people hear that this possibility that project concern facility here in Effingham would be shut down, you're going to be hearing about it. So I just wanted to tell you what's going on, and if you're interested in throwing some funding, get ahold of me, and I'll bring you any information that you may want.
That question I have is, I want to be on that board. Because I know we only have two people from this town, from this, from that greater Effingham area. There's one lady from Minnesota and one lady from Attica. If we want to be on that board, and how do we go about getting another position on the board? Because right now, there's 10, there's 12 people, 10 of them are from Atchison.
I don't know, I, I think that that's probably a set number, set probably by statute, isn't it? Or they're, how they're made, how they're made up. I don't know if you can.
We don't get a lot of representation, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Well, and that's what we've been told too, no one can go, the board of directors has said, no one's invited to the meeting, meaning for close. Now, this cancel. I understand that, but what they have told people is no talking comes with a meeting.
That's something that I had heard, and I was going to visit with Pat about, that there is a lawyer on the board, and I would have thought that they would have known the, those things, but I want to get that iron out, make sure that, I'm sure we've, I've been in here that, you know, it's definitely an open meeting.
Well, yeah, just like, we're just working with those kinds of, Effingham was really concerned about their seniors, but I had an agreement on that from here. And they feel like they're really being cast aside, basically, just cast aside. And so, I mean, yeah, we would need to talk with us, you know, us, as far as if we could possibly fund, you know, give some funding. But, you know, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, my question is to the board down there, is why are you just, you know, giving stuff out? And it's another thing, I don't agree with another thing, but I give it the same.
Right.
So, I mean, that's what I'm concerned. And I don't want to do some more digging, I'm not guaranteed.
I just wanted to bring, my concerns, and I know Effingham, and there's a lot of participation with it. I think numbers are down since COVID hit, COVID. There are a lot of people who take the rural delivery instead of the coming in, but the socialization is important. And I just wanted to bring it up to you guys, so you can discuss it, and see if you were interested in doing that, and if you can get ahold of me, and, and we'll work something out. Thank you for your time.
I just remembered that today is the.
I was like, hi, what are you talking about?
When Justin said he had had several phone calls about it, so I kind of, I was, didn't know whether to get ahold of you, Katie, beforehand, but I thought, well, I'm sure you all kind of need the information, so I just chose this venue.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
Give me a little city hall to go over. Is that the phone number for you?
The number three, three six zero, zero two.
That's a question for you, I'm not sure I say so. So you were saying that a lot of these on the rural are giving notes to other people? Did they cut that out and you came to the center and you think that would help?
Having more participation would definitely help. In person. There's the possibility if they would get partial funding, that they would still close the center, but be able to deliver the rural delivery. That I've, that kind of cuts down participation and socialization, and having the ability, the building's an asset for people to have functions at and everything. So, you know, if it closes and is locked off, it will, unless someone else flies it and does something worth, worth a venue, will lose that thing, so.
Because I don't know anything about it. Are the meals prepared there?
No, they're brought in.
Are they prepared to ask the number?
Yeah. All the help needs, yes.
There's meals that they do for the students. And then there's meals that they do for here, the meals here that use, so it's that too.
Okay. And then they pay for, there's a price for everything else they go deliver on.
I think if, I know, because I, when we had a meeting, we had it a long time in Atchison at their facility, I paid six dollars for it. But I'm, the demographic yet to give it to. I don't know how else to say it, so.
Is there, is there an option for transportation, for like, maybe there are some that would like to come in and socialize and eat their meals with people, but they're not either comfortable driving themselves in, or they don't have a way to drive themselves in? Is there?
I haven't heard that that's a problem, but I think that the COVID scare and being around, there's a certain thing about possibly taking something. So that's even how they play bingo now, with instead of having the cards that we used to have with the little slides on, and people handling the same ones, they use the single piece of paper that they cross it off, just so they were kind of trying to get rid of the, anything that's touched and handled and, and handed out.
And things like that, and project concern will provide, it's all having to be done by other people. Why not? Find bingo cards in the dog, it's all having to go, and don't, because project concern will work.
Well, they, they cut out for even their own facility in Atchison. I mean, they just cut out buying and stuff like that, because they're having a basically hard time overall.
With, with kind of the, I mean, I can think we're past the huge thing with COVID and all that, is there any talk about going back to the original, I know this is kind of a silly thing, but just to cut out some of that, is there any talk about going back to the regular, the other bingo cards, so like, all the disinfectant things that are available, and the, you know, if you're only using your own cards, kind of thing, or does?
People, I, I guess they've gotten used to the system they got now, and, and feel comfortable with it, so. But I think if, they'll probably have to go back to that, if they're not being supplied, either that, or someone could pitch in and buy.
Yeah.
A bunch of them. I, I'm really concerned, I would like to see the center stay open. My dad doesn't use it, but I see, I know the people that do, and I'd like to have that option available. And so I, I pitched to keep it open to the other commissioners, and anything that interests or anything you think, you think of that could help, we'd appreciate it.
We appreciate the fact that you said.
Yes. And that you came here to inform us of what was happening, because this is the first I've heard of any of that.
Well, there's been, I mean, some people seem to know, and they, they said it's been talked about for a long time, and other people are just now finding out. It's kind of the next, and I didn't know where we all were in the mix, so.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you. My first question.
Well, my letter has Justin on it, but I did know that he had resigned yet. The subject gives request to consider changing the Effingham community library. And we would need it in extended family of Nancy N. Low. I wanted to formally request the city council to consider changing the name of the Effingham community library to the Nancy N. Low Memorial Library. Nancy was born southwest of Effingham on July 13th, 2036, and lived here toward passing April 12th to 21st. She raised her five, family of five children. In Effingham, was an active participant over many years with the Red Hat Ladies, Happy Hour Club, the Uncle Club, the Women Club, and the Effingham Library. Nancy Ann often expressed her love for the community of the library. She commented many times how important the library is to the community. The families would propose to furnish and hang a memorial sign over the interior library door, and saying something like, the Nancy Ann Memorial Library. And we would also make a donation to the city of Effingham, and that a fast allowance to be used for the library efforts with the community of the under the building to this. The low families would also ask the council to create a memorial area over the top of the bookshelves, so any future residents that would like to make a donation to the library could hang a memorial plaque and for their family member. And my cousin, my uncle, they would design that, and like, make the plaques for that before that. We respectfully request that the city council, initiate a public discussion regarding the opportunity to make changes and bringing the public together to remember that. Thank you, junior time, to the city, I just, I mean, to them, but. And I made copies, but I didn't make enough copies, but. Okay, I got, I don't have anything else.
I just need one and I'll send it out.
It was just, my mom was one that, who created the library, worked on it, you know. We had a reunion, and this was kind of brought up, and they had plugged up your dentures, but when Uncle Johnny drove around town, saw, you know, his friend was here, and he was there. And then he came up with the idea about the library, so. Have you talked to library boards about it? No, it would be that, this was the first. I don't know who's. I don't know who's in over there too. I don't even know who's on the library board, but now it is.
I'm David.
That's it.
It had to be approved by the library. The library was, you know. Secretary Delano Lee.
Amanda Hughes.
Abir Alvaro. Marin Stroud. Um, I can find out.
I know, they just had a meeting, and we have our last one.
Yes, they had a meeting last time.
That is awesome, like how, what, what do we need to do?
The process.
Well, I mean, you, you have a board, I think, if you were going, you just provide it. Yeah, we should definitely be in all groups, but I think those groups, we need those groups, we need those groups. Do you think, or I would need that soon.
Yeah. Or invite, like, some of the library boards to our next meeting, because we'll need to get them two weeks early.
Yeah, they probably do, and probably need to be before, I don't know. It may need a third, it may need a third work. I don't know, we used, they used to have very often.
This says maybe not on the 28th, around the 26th, but I don't know who's.
That should be just ours. No, those are just ours.
Just ours.
Oh, sorry.
That's what we, we'll find out. Scott, Scott. I didn't know we saw the library board.
No, we appreciate you bringing that up.
We talked, we talked about it for a few months, and now we're out of town, and I said, what am I, so, you know, I thought, well, just to be a good place to start, and I didn't know.
Yeah.
If they just, if they still have the library board.
You got to start somewhere, so you did that.
So are you going to invite them to the next meeting, or?
We have a meeting within the next two weeks. But they, I mean, next week.
We can have them discuss, even though, except my representative from here to those.
Is there something where we could send them a copy of the letter that we received?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to agree with you to do that?
That's fine. And then somebody else can ask me, or can I come back to you another week?
What do you have to do?
I would say probably if you wanted to be at the meeting, we can find out when the next meeting is.
The next meeting is April 2nd.
The one Mary Ward is. What is that?
Yeah, maybe you can say that.
Seven, April 7th.
Then we'll have a meeting the next weekend.
Yeah.
Excellent. And what did you guys give me?
Next one, say.
Thanks.
Okay, this is the idea, this is the city. All right.
Awesome, good girl, thank you, thank you, Susan.
Yeah.
And that would turn in on time. Is that for lifeguard? You don't think the lifeguard, you want to make it up? Oh, I don't, yeah, she just said.
She didn't say what she was applying for, and so I just gave her the ten benefits.
Looking through the notes, you want to move on to the minutes? Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you good to approve the bills? I was going to give him a minute.
Yeah, I just promised you.
Maybe we'll be through in minutes. One second. Move favor.
Bye.
Anywhere else, send me. Um, and that's for the staff, what I really want to get. And, and.
Somebody has a personal bill. That's the reason.
You got a second? Call in favor? Any opposed? Before we move into like the superintendent's report, the superintendent's report, and the city clerk's report, can I request that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters with the council and our attorney president, my honor, my honor, and such. Fifteen minutes?
We'll stop the recording.
We'll stop the recording.
Okay, executive sessions. Not even a walk by. Bluetooth. Everybody say, stop recording.
One of these parties, your grandchildren will teach you how.
They're thinking most possible. Andrew, before you got here, there was talk about um, electing a new temporary president of the council. And we.
You were, you were nominated.
We didn't. We didn't. They didn't do anything else. I said, well, maybe we should wait for Andrew to get here to do that. Correct me if it's so.
So he's here now.
So he's, right, that's why I'm circling back to that one. I was like, about it, so.
So I nominated Kathy to be the temporary.
Temporary and or permanent president of the council.
That's a, that's a.
All right. All in favor? I'm very.
See what I'm gonna say.
Tempor- president of the council and what then when somebody is appointed, that'll be like a. Another election and. An appointment will be until the end of the term.
Election like a county?
Like an unknown, not in that election, like a vote, just a. Yeah.
Because she's only ten brothers.
We talk about that now? We have anybody or like?
I'm willing to hear like potentials. I don't. I would like the dust to settle a little bit before there's an appointment. But I'm, I'm open to.
Good of having them.
Anybody that you think needs, I mean. Realistically, it'd be kind of awesome if everybody came at the table with a name. Just, you know, group of that kind of stuff. Um, and then. I feel like next meeting. That would be inappropriate.
So how does one do that? Like, do we talk about that to them and say, would you be, would be out of exacting to me putting your name in there? Or? How does that usually go? Because you don't want to nominate somebody and they'll be like, I have no interest in.
I talked to them, they've already asked me.
I get my time is very organic when you get some people expressing interest and. There's probably some people that do something that maybe they're bothered might be interested that they're talking to. Uh, there, there isn't anything in the statute. I don't know that it really matters how it's usually done because. Some is under different cities, yeah.
Is there? Is, can we put it up on Facebook?
It's a, it's a mature interest and you ask being a vector of this. Over the age of eighteen, live within the city limits, registered.
So like if we posted that on Facebook and, you know, to say anyone interested, contact us next meeting?
You could.
And then, you know, we might have our own names, we might get some people that we didn't talk to and then. We're getting to say, contact us or for our city council. Yeah. Yeah. Because like we can hear everybody's names and, you know, somebody comes and they have ideas, but then we could like go into executive discussion. Session to discuss.
I don't know that you can do it in an executive session because they're not person, they're not personnel. They're supporting them, so it isn't. They're not personnel, they're not non-elected persons.
So we couldn't even like talk to them privately, like just us.
And we, we could have discussions individually. That wouldn't be subject to cans of the meeting act that you could have outside, but. If you're gonna do anything as a council, you have to be in a meeting. Yes, it would be. I'm going to play to the convention.
Well, you can, sorry, so I was gonna say, just with clarification, the next regular meeting, not the one that's. Which is, yeah. Could we edit that special meeting to include? We might be around the twenty sixth here.
So is it a good thing to post it on Facebook or is it not a good thing to post on Facebook?
Well, you're gonna get it open some citizens.
And they can't say, well, we didn't know, because it's open now.
Our website's not open yet till the twenty third, right? April, April twenty third. So I think we ought to get it put it on Facebook.
Yeah, I have to contact the current city council member address.
How are you guys like going to contact?
You could just, do you want to tag everybody in it? All of us in it? Would that be the easiest thing?
Yeah, then they can get us messages.
Like on Facebook? Message like, yeah.
Is everybody on Facebook?
What?
Uh, I got an email from the state. That we did not get our first round on that water funding again, the water grant. So I'll get with.
B and G?
B and G and have. The citizens apply you for the next round, which.
The Kansas water.
Yeah. Which I was reading some form and I don't know how long that's been last. With President Jack, we call the federal funding and stuff, it's gonna make it even harder. To get rid of it. They had, they started right out of my plot trap, which was lucky enough, we was. I was in between snowstorms, so I was able to get that fixed. That's one of the big bills from NAPA and then we had a big bill from um, Skyview. Equipment, I want them, that was for starter and alternator for back. We had. Four customers that I shut off the non-pay and three are back on. Um, took water samples. Uh. And that's more rock, because people are running water off the driveways and I need extra. To water the, whatever.
So they need to ask, do they pay for them?
Yes, we charge, we used to charge twenty five, but since quarter period, I just raised it to thirty now. And it's a back of, the back of bucket, so it's, it's not just giving them the bucket to invest, it's not really fair. That's a lot of money for just putting it all.
That still covers our additional cost of revenue.
Yeah.
And we just get it, they just get a contract that you said.
Yeah. And they put, they pay for it before we even deliver it. So, um, and we only, um, I know we never got into this, but um, we only allow two scoops a month. Just for the simple fact, the bill will be in the cock and, you know, if we have something else going on. You know.
They think we request that for the driveway and.
Yep, yes.
About sixteen weeks.
That's.
Take it about eight months.
Eight months, yes.
And Jeff, on those water that you shut off? How did they act to react?
They, I did, I did, I did not even.
One account.
They, these guys.
One account called uh, to complain. Other than that, it went smooth.
Complain because?
They did not feel the hundred dollar reconnection fee was fair.
Even that wasn't.
Yes.
So they not, they not all of them got turned off?
No, I still have one that's not.
Is there anybody living in that residence?
Yes.
Contact with them?
Or nothing?
Because he sends out a letter and was it ten days? We'll give them ten days. And then so they know it's stated in that letter, one day they're going to be shut off. And if it's, if they haven't even made an attempt, even if we, we discussed it, right, wrong or indifferent. If they made an attempt, okay. You know, just keep making attempts, try to pay it off, you know.
So there's some that didn't fully pay it off then?
We got one that's, and I don't know if she ever will. Right.
One made a substantial payment. So it went from nine hundreds with that current bill down to six hundreds. So paid more than a third of her accounts.
Which is still off.
But she still, so no, she's, uh, we didn't turn her off because she made that substantial payment. But this upcoming one, um, if she doesn't pay by the seventeenth, we have another letter for her to send out and everything.
Well, the question I had too, why are we now paying off the separate fifty percent people?
It's however G works does it.
That knows that.
So magic.
It was the eleventh for a really long time.
Yeah.
And then it changed to the tenth that one month and I was like, what do you say to her?
So like, can we know who those people are?
I.
Can't say that.
No, no, that's such a.
I.
Just think about the resources, like what resources now provide or help them with?
I'll, I'll do it this way. If you want to know, contact your. I don't feel, this is my personal opinion. I really feel bad enough that I have to shut them off. But. Now, it's almost like a shame game. And I don't like that at all. I don't like anybody's, if, if you want any information, call these guys and do it that way.
What, what, what can we provide them? Like, who can we connect them with to get help? Like, if she has six hundred dollars. Her bill is still six hundred dollars.
Plus the upcoming bill.
Yeah, you know, like, oh, how can we?
They'll contact like the National Army, someplace like that.
Maybe that could be a list of resources that sent out in the letter.
Yeah.
Maybe. And like depending on like their age, you know, could they get with that area agency? You know what I mean? Like.
And I don't, I don't know, if they, I don't know what kind of assistance they'd need.
Okay.
Well, that could be, I, I think the best way to do that is to put a list of resources in with a letter.
Yeah.
Like, cause we.
Cause especially with these being reported, we have to be near.
I was just like, I, I want to help them, you know what I mean? Like, how can we help them?
That's being proactive, right?
Right, yeah. If, if she has six hundred dollars, like. A lot.
Yeah, if we can get some of that stuff, I think maybe we can. Letter and put in with that and like, here's a list of resources, yeah, contact, reach out for help or.
Not a file over there for an individual that's neglect enough. And so he's, we're gonna talk about it after the meeting. Uh, get some more information, I'm gonna send him some pictures about and there's some. On Main Street.
Counselor. Counselor, guy.
Um, get him started on the legal side of it and go from there. We sent out three more um, today. And I'll probably be contacting you in ten days.
And ten, like explain that.
So, so a ten day debate is basically, we give them ten more days. So the.
Like nuisance, nuisance thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So the ten day debate is, and you guys already know this. That we give them the thirty days and I go back, if nothing's done, we give them a ten day debate. Which is basically, we give them ten extra days and then we can go. A different route, right Pat?
We can, we gotta, yeah, we've got to.
We can go the legal route.
Yeah. There's three choices, I guess, but. A lot of them involve choosing the municipal court, which we. Not, I don't know, it's been probably a couple of years.
Last year.
It was before I was.
Right.
For him. Um, the, the second is an administrative proceeding for the council and the. The third is a civil action, a district court, which you have less control in that. The administrative proceedings are generally preferred, I think, city.
So are we able to share those addresses? Of, you know what I mean, like?
Are we able to? Yes, um.
Need to pass.
I mean. It would be discretionary, it was close, those are under the open records there. And you'd have to make the determinations, the whether the disclosure or specifics were. Getting married and doing things without way of the public.
They're involved a lot, yes. If you want to come up.
If you, if you guys want to contact these guys or whatever.
Yeah.
I think the only time that we should.
If they're.
Address addresses is like if we're condemning it.
Yeah.
We're initiating the proceedings of condemning it because that will be public.
If they receive a fine for nuisance.
And one of the three of the ten days that we sent out today. Will be in line for that. Uh, for the.
Commending it?
Yes. This here I got with Adam and. It's for the bulk water meter. So because there's a lot of times, and I know you guys don't really like the people having the meter in their possession. But there's a lot of times I don't have time to sit there or meet them. So we come up with, basically it's like you're, you're uh, doing a water deposit. For a house. So they will pay a two hundred dollar security deposit for the meter. And. Once it's done and over with and they bring it back and it is not damaged, where we have to either replace it or have it fixed. Then we'll give them their two hundred dollars back. And they will, they will be charged the outside water rate. Because the tower is outside the city limits.
So will that just come off of their?
It, it could, however you guys want, if, if it's, it could.
Like if they get a hundred dollars worth of water, they only get a hundred dollars back?
And it's, it's up to them, I guess, or however you guys want to do it. It, this was just an idea.
Well, there, my concern is, if they have the water and we're assuming that they're going to hook it up when they're pumping it into it. What if you not hook it up, they're putting water in there?
They have to have, if most guy, most contractors, even the county that uses. Um, they have uh, what they call banjo fittings. So you slide it in and it clamps on like a, quite a big clamp. Nine, uh, actually ten times out of ten, these companies do not have fire, fire hydrant connections. Because they are very expensive and they're not a normal connection. Um, so they would have to go buy a special fitting to actually hook to that hydrant.
So the meter hooks to the hydrant?
Yes, meter hook directly to the hydrant and then it's got a banjo fitting on the other end.
So that's how that.
That's how they're able to.
It goes into the hydrant, it's got.
Yes.
How many, how many people use, how many people get bulk? Like, how many times?
So last year, I think there was only two people.
Like, only twice, or they were kind of like the only two people that did it a few times?
They were only the two people that may, maybe have used two thousand gallons, three thousand maybe?
What, I think, just from what I'm hearing from the different departments around, everybody's predicting a hard drought. Yeah, if it's a hard drought, we're probably gonna have more people that are gonna want to come in here and use that. We definitely have to have something in place.
Do they need to have a drought? Clause in there?
Yeah, we need, we should put something in regards to drought, you know, if we, if we're deemed to be in a severe drought.
And, and that's where we would have to go back to our water. Um, ordinance and follow the drought procedure that's in it.
It has to be part of the water.
This year?
Should be.
It could be, I mean, if you want it to be added in there, that's fine.
Yeah, we definitely need to tie that to the ordinance. And then we also need to specify the rate that we're wanting to give them, charge them.
Right, and, and I, I had him go ahead and put it on, I could pass this around if you want. So outside rate, um, is sixty-six eighteen from the zero to a thousand gallons. That is the meter and. What, that was the cost plus the seven dollars or whatever?
Yes.
So we just add those two together. And that's where we come up with sixty-six eighteen. And then nine dollars and sixty-three cents for.
So, and, and the past hasn't always been for, like, they have to pay that?
I don't know how Janet did it, I really don't. I think all she did was just charge them the outside rate and they paid off of that.
I was gonna say, I think that, when they come out with that sixty-six, is that the monthly maintenance fee?
But they're gonna pay it because they need it. So, so the people, the people that mainly. The, the company that I've always had, I've had them two or three times since I've taken over. Um, they were doing a lot of, of, uh, water injection. That's the, that's the most. Out of the customer that I've had.
I think it's, we're safe on that basically.
I wouldn't leave it as it is. I mean, and. Do, do you want me to put a replacement price on that so they know what it could be?
Well, you might have to keep updating that, so I think we just put replacement.
Because, uh, I got, last time I got some bagged, uh, ash from Schulte. I had, uh, my guy look it up and it's like three grand for that. With meter to replace the whole thing as it is.
You might say subject to a X amount of dollars instead of, I don't know.
But that, that's just to give the meter just the two hundred dollars. That's like, that's like you guys paying the two hundred dollars to have your meter turned on at your house. Then they lose the two.
Do we have insurance? Are, are they insured?
No, cause I don't think we want to have insurance on our hydrants.
What we need is right, and what we need to include. We need to say two hundred minimum. The two hundred, the refund of, the two hundred dollars refundable deposit is minimal. Subject to. Um, what additional costs, something for that. Because that way we cover ourselves.
Right.
If it turns out that we're having four hundred dollars on the meter, we, you know, otherwise we're only gonna get two hundred in the back. Make sure we're covered. So we say this is the minimum we can be charged. If there are additional charges, you can, you will be responsible for this. That way we'll get.
Do you need to incorporate this in our, uh, ordinance then?
Yes.
And then, uh.
Is that being incorporated in the res- in the resolution with great changes or no, because it wasn't established?
No, it couldn't, it would just be in the resolution. Did we adopt, we didn't adopt that order?
No, because we didn't, we were with them.
The resolution we did.
Yes, we did, the resolution, you're correct.
The sewer would have it.
And the ordinance, the athletic ordinance just got signed.
Well, the only charter, the only ordinance you have is the charter one, right?
Right. The water, the four water ordinances are not signed yet until.
We can wait until we got the charter ordinance.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, we did one early.
We did one last, was your first thing?
We did one repealing the increase.
Yep, and allowed to adopt, uh, water rate increases based on resolution. Yes, that one is in effect.
Yep, on the meter that people use this, can you see if the number is on it?
It's, it's a, it's an old injury.
Well, I guess where I was going with, with that, is this where they're gonna bring it back into the city, they're gonna bring it? I think that we should keep a log so we make sure that our numbers are always making.
Basically, what I do is I take a picture of that meter before I hand it to them.
Perfect.
And then when they bring it back, I take another picture and then turn it in.
Or attach to the contract.
Yes.
You could even add, like, add, like, starting number, ending number.
Right, right, right.
I was just thinking like the mileage logs that we use on the vehicles.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I, yeah, I don't just let them have it and then try to guess what.
I didn't think that, I just didn't know if, if it was like a Neptune read or if you could actually see the number. But if we have a little paper contract, we could just add that on there.
Right.
I don't like the fact that we're finally got something.
Good progress, good progress.
I'll be with you tomorrow, because we'll have to, we'll have to go through the views.
I'm gonna say that I'm a little hesitant with the sixty-six eighteen for every initial thousand gallons every time, like if it's a repeat customer or.
But if they're gonna.
And most, most of the time, these, like, the, the injection guys, they have it for maybe like two days.
And maybe we can put a, a time on it. Or, yeah, monthly would be that.
That's what rate is anyway, right?
Yeah, you, I, that, that meter's never gone for more than at most three days.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you put it zero to.
And, and they always do it, they don't do it, like they come in on a Friday and get it for next week. Now they come in the morning that they. Want it or need it, that's when they get it and they have it for the couple days and then.
Yeah, I don't mind the sixty days, cause that's gonna be longer.
But then they come back two weeks later.
They would have to be charged up to about sixty dollars.
So I guess there, what's the normal? Five thousand maybe? If that, I don't know, I don't think their trucks are that big because they have to carry everything else with them. So I think they want maybe have like a five hundred gallon tank. So, but they could be up to a thousand to fifteen hundred. It's, it's not, it's, and it's not enough that it taxes my water system. The, the tower beeps up with them.
Well, here's the, here's the other part, is there any special equipment you have to have at that water tank to give them that water?
No, there's fire hydrant right there. No, absolutely not. And that's where some people in it. I understand the fire department's issue because they only have a two inch line to the station when they fill trucks. But they always fill out that hydrant, which I don't know. But, and, and they're really good about turning in how many gallons they use. You know, if I'm not there or whatever, um, they're good about letting us know on, on what water they use.
Do we build them?
No, we use, that's, that's considered a water loss.
Well, yeah, we do.
You know, we don't, we don't go into that. Cause they, I mean, they're hooked right into the hydrant, they don't, they don't go through the. I think that's it. The snow, we had pretty good luck, I don't think. We had one accident, but she was driving too fast and slid off in the ditch, not even her fault.
Any, uh, wind damage from Wednesday?
The only thing I seen was a little itty bitty tree down here, walked by two big trees. Becker, Becker's pants is going down, that privacy comes out. Other than that, I don't think, I don't think anybody had.
I have something to.
Why is that a question? You had mentioned back several months ago that some of our work. Because we have to load down by. I guess I have a question of why are we using a lawnmower? Cause that's what you had said, and I mean, I'm, I'm just saying.
Right, now, I was, I was wanting to. Get a, a bigger bush hole, not bigger, it'd still be a ten foot, but it would be an offset, so it'll have one wing. Cause when I load lagoons, I'm like five feet away from the water. Because that, that mower is like directly behind track. But if I have that offset, that can hang down by the water and keeps me up on the, on the bank. And it helps down here, I can, like the county, I can hang it over that ditch. On the blacktop side and then I can go around along the field side and keep all that down. No, 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 no. They, they would be in the water more than, more than not.
Also, one of the citizens asked me, um, about Beverly Jeffries, it's got a dead tree. On. Challenge, so it's on the very end of her house there on the street.
Right.
Right across from David Bo's house.
Yeah.
She's got a big dead tree and she's wanting to know, it's on city property. And she's wanting to know when, because she said she was frightened when that storm came through. If it falls, it's right, it's gonna get her house.
Is that the tree board thing or is that a city thing?
The tree board's in charge of all the trees. I mean, uh, I, I have to get with Dwayne about it.
She said.
And I don't know, Boston's have been a full. Cause I just have an eighteen inch and then that new one is smaller, yeah, more branches. I don't have very much soul to take the whole thing.
I think she would be happy if we could just get it, fortunately. Yeah, it's positioned where if we get a good wind from that direction, it's gonna.
With the tree, is it the tree board is who takes care of that or are you supposed?
The, the tree board's in charge of all the trees. I assist them in taking them down if, if we have to or, and I know we're not everyone, I guess, Austin packages is sold. I've been waiting for a week and a half just for a couple of year off. I can get with Dwayne. Yeah.
We're supposed to get another big one tomorrow, right?
Yeah, and, um. Look at it and see which branches will be more beneficial. It just scares me to death to do it because. You know, it's insured upon us and, yeah, we know damage and stuff like that.
Another thing, another thing that a citizen brought up to me. Is that there's, you know, the old, the ministry and school.
Oh, up here, the house?
They moved in, it's a lady from Berta, is her name, I'm not sure what her name is. But, um, they would like to remove that concrete in front of there. And they're wanting, they wanted to know what, if that was okay to do that, because the problem they're having is trucks parked on it.
Yeah, they. And that parking is theirs too, they can do whatever they want.
So she was wanting to make sure that it's not gonna be a problem if they go in and rip all that concrete down, put some grass in there, make it actually the front yard. Yeah, the parking lot, that's what I didn't think of, but I wanted to bring it up just in case.
Which parking lot?
Parking all the way from this corner to the alley.
It's, oh, yeah, that's a funny.
Yeah, yeah, that's, no, they can, they can do whatever they want.
This is, there's a sidewalk there.
Especially like those fertilizer trucks when they're waiting in line.
Yeah, and she's like, she doesn't need that, cause she was like, I'm gonna take truck.
Yeah, they got with me, Clark, back when they first moved in and David just wanted to put a little deck or something out front that they can sit on.
I do think that'd be a good sidewalk right there.
Well, we got, this is okay down this. Yeah, I know, that's.
I'm gonna make sure it's this one.
Um, the stone removal, um, I did have a complaint that there was maybe some snow, it was moved. Uh, part of the mountain alley, the air, so. So then just make sure that you don't block them up too.
I, when I push that parking, I try to stop behind that light pole so that it's part of somebody else. It wasn't on me. I, I won't, no.
Well, I didn't, I know the state probably can push some stone around there too, so.
Yeah, so, and we have a citizen that helped does like the bank and stuff. And I've been on them because when they clean up over there. They take it all over here. And the ground pole was perfectly okay with it. I said, nothing else, just put it in the alley over here by the seniors building. Go back here as far as you can. Then it all runs that or put it in this alley. You can dry usually take most of it because that just, that'll go down and be okay. It was just, it was just an easy, get it out of the way and be done with it, but, uh. But yeah, other than that, they blocked this parking up over here so bad, and especially after the first one, we had way too much snow. Um, I started on the pool today, started pumping the nasty dirty nasty water out. Get that going.
Did you ever get paint?
Yeah, you can call me back, so I'm gonna call eleven.
Okay.
Because we still have plenty of time. Well, and I can't say I hope we open because it will be open, whether we have life goes or not, it has to be open.
Has to be opened or does it have to be filled?
It has to be operational. Whether it's being used or not. Adam got a letter from KDWP about it. And we had to sign off on it and send it back, so stating it will be open no matter what and it has to be operational. Whether there's anybody swimming in it or a car swimming in it or whatever, you know, without that.
She'll get back with us. She'll get back with us.
Yeah, I will get ahold of eleven worse. Those guys are real good about getting back with me. One of that's where we got our only thing for the. I'll ask him about it and see what it's gonna cost. I know you guys were, were concerned about the little hot feet, you know.
What's if there's like a pattern, yeah, which one line circles or something?
Something, okay.
You've been on circles a lot.
I'll see, I'll see what they got and.
Concrete area needs to be painted.
Right.
It is expensive, but having something like around the perimeter that we use.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that concrete is.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I'll go get the price on the paint for anything. Actually, the paint, actually, what I. So I have a couple of tipping out. It's, so it's. It's something else.
What's the status on that trailer on John Street?
That's your ten day plus. The rest of my stuff will be, it's actually later on in the, the list of, of things to, to talk about. So I'm good.
Right until we nation done. Like you got access to everything and you works again, like you have all your, everything really good, good. Well, so works the same.
So I'm gonna ask up to that, like when the, when he works at their go live thing, they lost access to simple city.
Oh, really?
You worked on access or we?
We lost access to simple city, which had the twenty twenty three stuff in it because they went live. I'm like, how can you?
They have to have the.
How can you take away our access to all of our finances? Because, yeah, but that was part of, that's a problem that I don't think. Maybe I misunderstood or I wasn't aware of. That was part of the issues with the go live stuff. It's back now, right? Did you get? Were you able to get access back to? Oh, sorry, I'm getting out of myself, but, but that was part of the issue.
Jeff and I will both be gone the twenty fifth, the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh for the KRWA conference in Wichita.
Fun.
So.
Yes. We'll also be gone the twenty seventh, so the office will be closed. So Friday?
No. So I will be here that Monday until probably noon and then go get my stuff and drive down. And then I'll be back Friday.
Against Monday?
No. She can't put up with me for two hours.
My wife's doing the same. Cause they have stuff there, three things for the wives to do. And then, so I was gonna bring that up later potentially. So I will actually be gone all week. Um, her brother lives in Union, Oklahoma, and he's in nursing home. So we're gonna go see him since we're only two hours away. And with, with that being said, real quick, um, because, you know, one month, yesterday.
Should we close on Facebook through the office yet?
I'm looking at May fifteenth, the state of Kansas puts on budget workshops. And they should be sending out emails hopefully this week, next week, something like that. Uh, May fifteenth is the tentative one into P K. But uh, I'd like to try and get to go to. We thought about maybe having both Lisa and I, but we definitely want to settle on it before we bring it back. But we've got a little while. Um, once I get it. So currently we have just an email from the guy I was talking to. It had to do with the budget reports. Because they did not receive it, so I had to. Yeah, so I, I had to do a few things and he said, you know, they are having a budget workshop this year.
You didn't receive with them, the Kansas haven't received, aren't over.
Take the budget that we approved?
They say why? We know why?
Hmm, I don't know exactly why. Cause I wasn't there.
Right, that's the one that Roger gave us.
Right.
Correct.
Um, Roger was supposed to be or Carol in that group or if that was something we had.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, and I.
Yeah. But hey, it's done.
It's done.
With his smirk, just.
Um, the charter ordinance for the website is dated and I've already sent it to be published for two weeks running. So it is the W W W or without um, city of Evingham KS dot gov. And so. Additional, so as you guys can see, we do have the camera all set up. I was able to set up the YouTube account. Get it verified. I'm going to try and upload this by next week, Friday. Um, I do, we'll need to look at some additional video editing software. I'm gonna try and get something. That's free first to see what all we need. So we took two different videos, so I'm gonna have to slice those together or have a part one, part two on YouTube. But.
You'll have to get those equipped, right? Before we come in?
But the camp was lying.
Well, they didn't, when I was involved with it, I mean, I, I, I go to the meetings, but I.
They go through Zoom and then they upload it, their recording from Zoom onto YouTube. That's an option, but Zoom for that costs money.
Well, it goes over an hour. I think it keeps you, I mean, there's time.
The sand dot gov is all completed. We're all good for that until March of next year. So that's for the federal grants and things like that. We have to have that doc. All I have on my. Unless you guys have questions.
You tell them what the channel was, is it in your?
It's in the email. I said, did I attach the YouTube handle? Does anyone? I will attach the YouTube handle.
That's a big enough.
On YouTube, there's something called. So it's at city of Evingham KS, I believe. So if you. Nope, at city of Evingham KS. So if you go into YouTube and search that, I believe that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, and, and it's all over KS. No doubts or nothing.
I was able to attach a picture of the water tower as our main and then attach a picture as our city of Evingham sort of background. So it looks.
Put that on Facebook as well. Looking at the reports. Did you guys want, I know there was a lot of discussion about only adding these when the committee had something to report or you wanna keep them on there and go through every committee. If we go through it, if we have a report yet, tonight, once again, keep moving.
Next month you'll be.
The science community, um, the actual, I mean, this is. When these I applied to four thousand and nine to total ten is because we only have quotations close to justified and four. So all of that information has been sent to them and they had everything that they need. We had two letters of support with it. You know, there's documents with it. They have everything they need. So, um, they, April fifteenth is what you probably think it was.
Things out mid April.
Yeah, so we should hear some. Hopefully we'll get it. But now that Jim has talked about it.
Thank you for knowing that.
But the grants are here.
No, will you give it Mr.? And then parts that are in the presentation? Is that where the science comes in?
One of those too.
I should have um, printed out those, those quotes. Well, I got, I got two quotes. One from the Sabata and one from Rob's, Robert.
Robert.
Robert's sign, Robert's sign with about a thousand dollars more. Yeah, um. And on, on the, the custom light, like the Effingham was gonna be like their love, Effingham. The word Effingham was going to, those letters were gonna be in three D. And so the lady at Robert, she was having email problems. It wasn't the best. I don't, I don't know, you know, like I, but yes, she knows, but then like Haley had to go in and change the sign because. They wanted to do it like four by eight instead of four by six. So there's just, there's a little bit, some difference. They won't do lighting.
There was a question on that too, because I'm giving a grant, it said it cannot be illuminated. That was one of the considerations on the grant.
Does illuminate it there? Does that mean like the neon signs or does that literally mean?
I, I think. Spotlight. Because the spotlight then becomes separate from the sign, but you still get the same effect.
Yeah.
Cause if they can place them in the right, if they can place that sign just around it, like it's put in lights or whoever does it. They put the lights in the garden area. And I don't know, like shine like this instead of straight on. Maybe that's why they're worried about illuminating. Shining straight on and if it's a really bright sign, it's warm people. And that could be, that could be part of their thing. I don't know, but if we.
I mean, the reason I had it, then I read that.
We made them catch in light. Protected and coming at an angle.
Well, yeah, and really when you're looking at, we're gonna do it either way. It will have help when possible. But I mean, if we do it with just spotlights on it, I think there's a better advantage. We could sign with the other lighting and there's a repair cost there, but if you got the spotlight, something goes out and simply put in.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. So do we wait till we know about that grant before even forward them? On the signs only whatever.
Well, I told them that we would have, because it says for estimated completion and I said between April and May. But we can still get the done within that time frame.
So like if we decided like, yeah, to go ahead and go on with the sign, it's okay if we still do it and then get the grant. Right?
I mean, we're wanting to do it anyway, right? With the grant and all regardless.
No, and me and Katie were kind of discussing that, like, should we just, we discussed, we picked the color.
I think it's close to the tight lines.
I think we, I think they're a big idea to have a council pick the color. They, they voiced their opinion. I mean, a lot of them have voiced their opinion. You know, like the choices are.
We were able to combine the two thoughts.
Okay, I would see that.
Well, we got their input now. I would say like Kathy said, you gotta decide. So we can get it done.
The other part of it is that that, I believe that is the same grant with the signage that you have. I, cause they said something in there about minerals. And so I'm gonna call, I'm gonna really think it's intentional about the front, you know. I think you only get one grant a year. But.
Who knows?
Hopefully we'll get it.
Yeah.
And I also put in the grant that we didn't have the other two signs on quote.
Oh, that was one thing too. Um, we got denied from KDOT for replacing the city limit signs with these signs. Yeah, so. I, I was gonna try and I got ahold of Carrie up in Horton, the guy that does all this and he's like. You can try, you know, I'm, I'm not saying one way or another. And yeah, well, I got an email back. They wouldn't do it, but. So we're out here. We can go probably right beside that sign. And I can talk to that guy. He should be back next month from California at Tom's year.
So like, like over here on the north side of town, there's like a no soliciting sign. There's a Lions Club, a Tree City. I think they're on both sides, aren't they?
Yes.
On both sides of town?
Soliciting sign, that's up to you guys if you want to keep it up or not. That was due to the previous.
So my, my thinking like was. A new, one of these signs with maybe those other little signs underneath, like a little collage of signs.
It's on, it's on learning.
Something, yeah. You know, like if there's three, if there's Lions Club, Tree City, no soliciting. I mean, cause I guess I didn't even think we could take those green signs down, like those are just those are signs. So I don't know, maybe just a smaller version of this.
I, you know, I.
I think the smaller, I like the idea with the other.
And so Lions Club, I know we talked about getting new signs. Those are really.
Great signs.
So is that something you want incorporated with the sign itself or do you want these signs added additionally like they are now?
Say that again.
Are you talking? Having the, like the new Lions Club, Tree City Club or Tree City sign and whatever. Having the, like the new Lions Club, Tree City Club, or Tree City sign and whatever else? In with the welcome, you want it the way it is now, but just smaller.
So like it would be like the welcome, the welcome to Effingham sign might be one foot by two foot, smaller version, and then under that have the three.
Okay, okay.
You know, like all on one.
Right.
Fit.
It's like a metal stand.
Yeah.
And just, you know, how.
But what I mean, what I do is I'll call National Sign Company in Ottawa and talk to them, cause they may be able to shrink those signs down themselves. I just don't know how it's gonna work. Um, as far as the Tree City, I think the, the no soliciting, that's as small as it gets. I don't think it can be.
Those are probably fine.
Maybe if we take a smaller version of that sign. Why can't we hang it below? It'd be a little green and white. You say the green one there, put it below.
Right there.
Nope, no, no women, well, actually, and that's why I talked to Jenna, um, about like out here, putting it in, in Hawk's pasture there. And we put it right in line with, with K-Docs, so they're right there together. Or further out or, or whatever.
Where is it now?
It's right just north of the curb or about hundred or three hundred feet. If, and if they didn't mind, if, if they would let us went on further down the hill. So that's actually the first sign they see instead of a K-Doc sign.
Mm-hmm.
That could be a thing too. Like out here on Tom's place, if we could put it closer to the driveway that they use to go up to the house both ways.
Or like in Joe and Jessica's yard, you know, like. Yeah.
You know, somewhere further out where they see owners before they see. But. And as long as we stay behind the fence, we can go anywhere we want.
We need to vote on a color then? I, I think I sent those to you, Jeff.
Really optimistic, we got a picture of you?
Blue and green.
Blue and green, I don't. Blue and orange.
I feel like I want orange.
I like the orange just cause it'll stick out a little.
I feel like I like the blue. I think it's something different.
My grace already for the night.
I feel like more people like the orange.
Yeah.
More people like the orange.
We.
I feel like the blue will be a, like a breath of freshness, it'll be something new, like.
Where is the green?
I just can't hide my.
I think there's kind of a lack of spirit in the town, I don't, we don't see it anywhere.
So like.
Getting something to.
Kind of cohesively.
Yeah, like.
We have gone with the tigers on the blue.
So there's the blue tigers?
With, um, like part of that grant, part of like signage, so another thought in my mind was these poles, you know, like, uh, little, little flags. Maybe we have like a summer, fall, winter, spring flag and in the fall it's like, it's all tiger. You know, like it's, it's the fall, it's the fall stuff and then in the winter, it's the winter stuff, you know, like, you know, make it downtown. Thinking do it with orange like downtown, you know?
I think that you'd wanna match that with our city sign too, though. I, I just feel like we need to incorporate school as much, not schools, but just like our.
Unity.
Into the school or.
I'll be fine.
I don't worry. It's gonna be mean and scary, take your time.
Well, it could be up there for fifty years, I don't.
I just have a hat and I can walk around. I'm gonna go with orange. Orange. Love the blue too. Nervous for like nighttime especially, even without illuminated. I love the blues more, like little classy, like just a little. Beautiful.
But that's okay, one is fine.
I think you go to any small town, there are signs, it's, it's the school, but you go to Falls, you see.
After sitting is green.
It used to be the eight, uh.
It's green and blue.
They also have a high school, so.
It's real good.
We're good.
So with the, like, do we need to decide on a who do you wanna win? Like, so we can get going on getting it?
Quality any difference between the two?
Who you want to have announced for the nineteen, so you can see, like compare this, compare the companies? We could, what's that cost, what's that cost side by side?
Tell them to do a representation of what it's like.
Um, so that, I kind of panicked because I thought that that grant was due on the Tuesday when it was due on Friday. And I was at regional wrestling, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is due on Tuesday, I'm like, I have to get another bid. And so I asked Potter, I was like, like, where did you get your, like, sign, like, where did you get your signs or whatever? And he said, um, the place in the Sabatha, which that was the custom life. And the new, and the donation on her all, that they put all those donors. The Sabatha place did that. So then just a little reference for what they did, but just don't need that, Jill could like get us the lockup that we really.
Think since the grant is already in with things, you could still get more bids.
Yeah.
Did you, the one, did you do the one that I said, was it the fast sign? It might have been, so I asked Jeff to take a picture of the location. So I need to do that and send that to Fast Sign, but I.
Yeah, I should have taken a picture of that and sent it on my grant.
Okay, so next week, the next month.
Next month too, but look at the quotes, look at the.
Regular, that's regular.
Look at the quotes, April ninth.
And that's the other one you guys. No, I need to finish leaving the information to get it, so I'll get the one from Fast Signs too. Sorry, I have to cancel again. I just don't know if that lady in St. Joe, like I feel like you she doesn't understand what you're saying. I mean, the worst she could do is give you a picture that you didn't want and that would make. Come, so I got. Is that, um, Lions Club? Is that complete the park playground? I'm sorry, what was I? Is that complete the park playground justification? Report? Yes. Man, you're so long, this long streets, alleys and sidewalks. That's, Katie, you've gotta get your sidewalks. No. No, we don't have anything.
I do have a question, since that's part of the streets, sorry. What about replacing the old banners that we used to put?
Well, you were at the bathroom, she was talking about that. So with our signs, like, um, so we can like all, like, to like have a, a new brand for the city, right? Um, and incorporate like the school up on our downtown, so, um, like in my, in my mind, like in the fall, we have a fall, fall banners and maybe that's something with the fall sports at school activities, then a winter, a summer, and maybe like one is our welcome to Effingham, like our new sign, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Or we have welcome every other one and the other opposite ones are with the season we're in, something like that.
I don't think that's something like that, I don't think. I thought, I thought it sucked, so.
I think most, a lot of times they just advertise for the night or week.
I thought they had something school specific this year.
Sort of, there's some. That's just a master.
But.
Well, and then. But they took those banners down or something else up now.
So to help with that, and would we, it'd be good to have sponsors, if we can get people to sponsor whatever sign they sponsor, then it goes on the ballot.
Well, and they, and like the high school kids, like seniors and stuff.
Yeah, I know we, we talked about that.
As I said, we talked about that a couple of years ago. So they could. Yeah. I'm sure most of your families.
I'll go one streets. Yeah, speaking of that, streets, okay, what else do we decide?
Yes, I'm, maybe, no, what I was gonna say is we're gonna be having a new council member come in. So we don't wanna leave it, but I'm fine with that, I just. But go ahead.
Streets, like last year we said, okay, we went and got quotes for John Street, we went and got quotes for Seaberry and all that.
Right.
Well, in my walking around the city, Seaberry from ninth to tenth was horrible. Very horrible. So, and then Tenth Street is horrible too, from Benton Township down to Long Gardens, that's horrible. So I was like entertaining the idea of maybe then to do Seaberry from ninth to tenth and do tenth from Seaberry down to.
Howie.
Howie. And, and I'm visiting that, but also like then we would include Benton Township and, and say, you guys were running the heavy equipment on those roads up and down. So, yeah, you know, and there, I mean, tenth was bad anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
But Seaberry's gotten a lot worse than that. And they have buildings and poles in front of them, so, but we need to ask, we need to bring them into a meeting and say, what can you do to help us on this cost, because if they're gonna tear it up, then they need to.
What about, um, this street? Howard in this way?
That's gonna be.
Howard's gonna be a monster.
One, a full one-year project.
Howard's gonna be a monster.
That's gonna, that'll be a street that'll have to be by itself.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like you say, if we can do some of these short stretches and even, you know, like Seaberry and the Tenth Street, they're pretty bad. I'd like to finish out Howard as well from where they stopped.
Tenth Street is bad, but there's not traffic down that.
Well, and that was a question I had too.
There's, there's only one, one guy and that's your neighbor across the alley, Kirk.
Yeah.
Kirk and Lloyd, they're the only ones and they go up the hill, they don't go down the hill.
Yeah, the down.
So maybe we look, maybe we look at just Seaberry from ninth to tenth and then look at Howard.
Shout Howard here.
This one over here is nasty.
It is, it's.
Yeah, so, but we need to address some of the streets in town. And last year we got, we started it in January, yesterday was up.
Yeah.
Now we need to get it so that we can get it done in the summer and get them.
And I, we just got, I just got a contractor pamphlet in the mail. Um, they're out of Wichita. Uh, I was gonna call him and have him, if we get, if we, if you guys wanted, you know, absolutely decide asphalt wise, cause that'd be a little bit more money. And so if we want to finish out Howard and Seaberry in that block and then there's two blocks on Howard. You know, if, if we get a, a good plan, then I can, when he gets up here, what's it gonna take to fix?
This?
No, I don't know, north out, north from the Coop North. And then, you know, some of these streets, they're cracking, but chip seal does wonders on them. It helps seal them out and, and keeps them nicer long. Uh, and that's a cheaper, a cheaper route, but these, these here where they're rutted out, that that needs to be completely redone.
Like this one, so, like you're, like that, will, will that happen, be all torn out? Or you just, you lay it over?
Howard's got so much concrete versus asphalt.
Yeah.
I checked on the wrong side of the street.
It's gonna be, I.
I go like this.
Yeah.
And that's because in the past, well, I've been told in the past, they chose to do a quick.
Yes. And that's, that's why it's that much or that much lower than the street.
When they put Howard in, first what I heard was when they put it in, it was muddy and everything, and they didn't let it dry out sufficiently and they didn't put a good base on it. So the ground's really moved a lot underneath Howard.
And that's what happened to William over by, the same, the same exact thing.
What about, um, we have to rip it up from sewer at all?
No, sewer, all our sewers are now.
Cause I know at one time they had that big hole out there and I didn't know it.
Yeah, I hear.
Needed to fix it.
That, that was for the storm.
Is that good to go there?
It's bad.
It's, it's, the street's good, yeah, but, uh.
That's why we, I kind of like. I was thinking, we will, if, if we did Seaberry and then less than, you know, if we look at Seaberry and look at this Howard here, we're minimizing the dollars that we're spending, but we're also potentially addressing the issue of the area. And if, we are not gonna get the streets done overnight.
Not a way, not, but like over, yeah, like over in front of Nancy's house, you know, Elizabeth, that one block there. That could be, that could, it is, there is a few ruts, that could be just passed in, but that could also be chipped away. And, you know, it lasts another two, three, four years. So that would save us money there doing it that way, you know, and it would still hold, it'd still be a good street.
Yeah, it's an alternative.
Call, I'll call, and, well, hopefully maybe these guys will be in Wichita or even that's accomplished. So I'll give us something to keep a few.
Next one's a way. No, you're fine, no, it's good, it's good, it's special, I'm gonna need to get some stuff going on now. All right, cool building and equipment. We have. Last, Jeff about the paint already.
We have, uh, the policy, we've always talked about the whole policy.
She said she was gonna approve it. I said, that she was gonna approve it and say to someone.
We need to get that started.
Right, and texting her, cause she's going to Australia.
I'm sure she'll accept it.
May.
We need to get, we need to get that one working.
Maybe does it sometimes. We need to. Just submit a packet with whatever.
Yeah, give us some ideas.
Either one. On the old business. You want. You need to call it, Sarah, some of the twenty twenty-three books and then reports.
Now, I talked to Christine and she's still wanting to do the reports that I had to get with G-Works. So I'm not able to access the twenty-three books without Simple City, so, um, I finally got the answer. We'll have to hook the old, um, we'll have to connect one of our old computers up, cause that's all where the data is. And so I should be, maybe next week, I'm not be able to get it to Christine. And you guys go talk for a little bit. So it's all on the old computer, we'll have you for hoping.
My data off the old computers?
It may be on the new ones, because we did the OneDrive and took everything, but, uh, the old computer already had the Simple City downloaded and everything.
Software download.
Yeah, so we can just easily hook it up to one of the monitors we have, um, plug it in and. So we can just easily hook it up to one of the monitors we have, um, plug it in and access it. Instead of trying to download it.
And that'll be for her to go in and do the corrections on that.
Is there a need to switch it over for our book files? Are we okay with it being over there on that separate? And after the audit, it'll be, the books will be all done, and then we won't have to worry about it.
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four auditor, um, he's still, Richard Shipley? Shipley, not Shipley, Shipley said, uh, um, he's willing to do it, it may be pretty expensive though, is it?
Nine to eleven thousand.
Nine to eleven thousand, so we have one year.
Oh, I was thinking the budget.
So every year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we know.
Yes, each, depending on if he finds any issues or. Yeah.
Wasn't four thousand the one we paid for?
The Christina has to fix those. No, that's not her cost, her cost will be in.
Her, her, not her engagement, I think, said an estimate of ten.
That would be on the high end, but it would cover.
For Christina, it was broken down into each year that she had to do it, and it was, it was estimated to be like about ten grand per year, but she got the twenty-two. She had to done quick with the, so, the ones that are closed, we did not pay. I remember, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what he was, you know, feel like. Now this one probably will be higher.
Twenty-three's really bad too, isn't it? How bad is twenty-four?
Well, it's gonna be worse, so. So are we gonna do, are we having her look over both twenty-three and twenty-four? Twenty-three closed, we don't want that to get.
We know when, and also, we know when we're gonna get a presence report, so we can help.
As soon as I can get everything to balance.
For different auditors. We discussed her suggestion, and that was Christina's suggestion, that she would see our books, so that was her recommendation.
What about, to be able to call, um, the guy from California? Do you think you would do?
Matt Wisdom?
I wanted to talk about that too. And that, and this is not anything against you guys, okay, preference is not against me. Now, my concern with this switchover is that, me and one of you have really ever done anything like this, correct? My concern is that we wanna make sure that this is done properly, that we go into Central Square and we have every base covered. On the software.
We a hundred percent agree.
Okay, so what I was, what I was like to, like to suggest, and it's not gonna be cheap, but it's gonna be efficient. Is that we contact a certified public accountant that is certified in public accounting, like municipality account. To come in and help us set up Central Square correctly. One hundred percent correct, to be in compliance with state statutes, be in compliance with all auditing and accounting policies and practices. And have them actually work with you guys, you know, and say, hey, well, what about this and this and this? So that it gets set up correctly from the get-go. And that we don't have to worry about having a ten thousand dollar audit. You're going out, going, you're, you're going over, because if we haven't set up correctly up to get at the beginning. Yeah, you might have to spend a little money on it, but then it's gonna reap benefits in the long. And Jake Wisdom is a guy that we can possibly do that, I have made a full call into them. Um, I got their information from colleague important, who's very knowledgeable on it. She said Jake Wisdom is probably the best ones to talk to on it. And I just wanna talk to him, and I will actually come up and, yeah, I'll be on the conference call if you guys wanna talk to him also, at the same time. But I just wanna get some input, and she said they may not be able to do it, cause they're pretty booked. But if they don't, they know somebody that would work with it. So I just wanna, I'm just throwing that out there, just to say, I, I want, that would help you all tremendously.
And so it's just have like, good, like.
Solid foundation.
So we currently have a quote in to Central Square, to see how much training would require. Because we won't lie to you, we have no idea what we're doing in Central Square. All the little minutias that are in the background, that I've never even heard of, it's, it's insane.
It's horrible, cause I've, I've gone through it, and they're, it's nasty.
Yeah, so we have a quote in to hopefully get training on that. So if that's a possibility that they're gonna need to train us, if we have the CPA camp come in to do that training with us, so he can see how that system works. Because he may be a CPA and fantastic, but if he doesn't know how Central Square works, how you know, where would he put that information sort of thing, does that make sense?
No, I, I get, and I get that, but, I mean, he's not familiar with Central Square, then it's, it's gonna be a learning curve for him also.
Even like partners, what if like their finance person?
That's good, that we can have, maybe work with them and have them come on and help too. I think, but, frankly, all the conversions I've ever gone through is you have to have your structure correct from the very beginning. Because Lisa's going through the, the pains of not having that right, and we're seeing that, because it was not done correctly. But if you have it done correctly, your job becomes a whole lot easier. And all of our auditing becomes a lot cheaper and more efficient, and we don't have to worry about passing it and everything else. So, um, you know, I, I just called them, and I just found the information out yesterday. I called them with a message, and they haven't got back to me yet, but whenever I do get a call back. Then what I can do is, if you guys would like, I'll come up and we can talk about it on a conference call or whatever. And you guys can hear exactly the same thing I do, but, I just, I'm just throwing that because I think, I don't want to see you guys struggle, and I know that you struggle. That'd be a help, I, my thing, my thing is, I'd be like, if I was in your guys' shoes, I'd go, yeah. Because it takes a lot of a burden off of you, and that way it makes it a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, done, right, we're good to go. Good to go.
I think that we'd be on board, cause we've talked, uh, to Justin before, and we talked to, I believe you the Monday about just getting help getting that stuff.
Yeah, it's not for the fitting parts to take the conversion and do it.
Yeah.
And it would be different if our system was right.
It hasn't been right for the last five years.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess.
Four or five years, so, and that's why if we can get it right this time, and get it set, and get it going. If you get somebody from your municipalities and knows like the funds, and knows how you have to structure, you know, like your subcategories and sub, you know, accounts and everything underneath those things, then you got, that's half the battle right there.
That's for central cities. I think they, they, they probably will hopefully know some basic knowledge too.
Well, yeah, they probably will, but I mean, every city.
Yeah.
I like that, I know, yep.
Last year.
We were talking with them, you want us to bring, you know, like, if I come up and talk with them, we can bring it up then, as far as like the accounting or audit.
Yeah, like could we do our audit?
Yeah, we can make it a two, two seventy call.
All right, new business, county cleanup.
County cleanup.
When's it gonna be?
We're gonna do the city.
The county cleanup is that cleanup.
We're doing city cleanup the same time we're doing county. So, so I got Stacy Joyce and Cindy Waddle from the counties. To, you know, at school, so Junior High Stuko, if weather permitting on that Friday, April twenty-fifth. Seventh and eighth graders are cleaning up, I can hear them, we're picking up trash, whatever, so. Yes, so, we, we want to do our city cleanup that same weekend. Like it, to get the dumpster at the blue building again, and then, um, it can just all be like that same weekend. Get ready for spring.
See, they're, they have, they have just the two sites, so, uh, you know, highway, and then the transport. Yeah, yeah, it'd be at their own place. That's why we did, uh, our own here.
I'd like, I'd like to, and I think if we planned it that far in advance, looking at county, and put it on the website. Did we go for a week last year? It's like two weekends, wasn't it?
Uh, it was two weeks, yeah, two full weeks.
I think that's a good intention.
Yeah, last year we didn't have much notice.
Right, yeah.
So maybe start it this April, this Friday, and then go to the.
Well, we can just fill out what they can put in it.
And I think we still may have that.
So like, we would do it from like this Friday, the May third. Is that what that is? April twenty, yeah, May third's the next. Saturday, or, or, May fourth would be the Sunday, make sure I can get dumpsters. Did you do it through Sunday or Monday?
Uh, through Sunday, cause I can't even pick them up on the, yeah.
So like, I could take our new stonemine and make a little flyer about our, our city wanting. But like Jeff, if you wanted to, like, I wouldn't mind doing that, if everybody's okay with that, but booking one of the dumpster, if you have tires, they don't go here, they go there.
Metal.
Yeah.
April twenty-sixth, what, nineteen?
And then, uh, I know we talked about this at the last one, uh, the the city wide brush them first, weekend in June, second weekend, second weekend in June. But we could also put that out too, like. Let people know about that too. Coming events.
Yeah, we can have a section on Facebook. Oh yes, on the website, very good, very good. All right, time card review, payroll printout from June twenty twenty-four to present.
So the one of this is all of the employees are leaving that, since June until, I think I printed this, uh, Tuesday. So this is everyone's gross pay and everything like that.
Okay, let me have it, I have a question, cause the last time I got this report was from January to January. It actually went in and said the hours by week, you know, so like this is regular pay overtime, okay. So we did, I put it all together.
Gotcha.
So that's kind of what we were wanting, I didn't know what you guys had to go through to do all that. It was a report that, I don't know if Lisa ran it or Janet ran it, somebody ran it, and it was just a payroll report that said it listed all the people, and then it listed, you know, it went down and put by week, how many hours they worked out, there's overtime, it's like overtime, it's regular time.
We tried, this was, this was what we could do.
Yeah, so if it was ran through June, that was before G-Works went live. And the reports on G-Works are about this detail. Yeah, other than that, I'd have to print out every single pay stub, uh, for each person.
So there's no report that listed out, cause I couldn't, like, on the last one.
Simple, yeah, G-Works, but Simple Cities, Simple Cities reports were a lot better. So maybe if you guys can get that old computer on, maybe you could get a report from Simple Cities.
But from only prior to September, so.
Yeah, we have the connections, so two different go rounds now.
Yeah, I could, I, I could go through and create a report like I did with the water, uh, with like hours or overtime hours. I would just need to know what you're looking for, so I can do it.
Just a lot of his time, he had to make it all.
We'll get back to it.
All right, time clocks. So this was brought up, cause we talked about like the different apps, you know, like the ADP, like just the socket on your phone. Um, just for like, like accountability, so we have record of clocking in and clocking out. Central Square does not have, I sent them an email, Central Square does not have a time clock option.
It's just really surprising to me, because they do all the taxing and payroll, but they don't.
It, my ADP, I had sent them an email months ago, they're just really not that expensive. And that, some people have to do the payroll, yeah, right, payroll, right, on that one.
Yeah, and I talked to them, yeah.
We got to buy the software for the.
ADP doesn't serve some time clock.
It, it gets bundled in with the payroll, I don't know if we have to do the payroll, maybe it's on clockwork, I don't know how.
Like, i- if, if you use ADP for all the payroll, then could you have like direct deposit? Like, could they just do payroll, boom, direct deposit, or check, whatever, it was twenty. It was twenty-seven dollars a month for five employees, if over four or five, if over that, it was like three something for. So, I don't know, yeah.
I just hate that we are quarantined for the payroll for them in Central Square, and then they're paying for time line and payroll, like, it's not that bad, I just wonder if there's like independent clock and things that would talk with Central Square, so it could just be like a.
They'll click and stamp, you know.
I was just thinking more for like the convenience of time stamps.
Cause if we did it here, then Jeff would have to come here and redate the clock.
Did they know of any places that halftime clocks have a match theirs?
I did not ask, but I can.
For the other cities, like.
Uh, Garner.
I know, I, you're still real stamp and click.
Do you guys clock in and out through Central Square? No, we have a different time management system, we use Kronos, K-R-O-N-O-S. Good, better, ugly. And she said, which I'm sure there are better programs out there for that as well.
Employee benefits and taxable vehicle allowance.
I did call the, so I first talked about it falls, they said that they don't do anything regarding city vehicles tax wise. So I called up the lead to just double check and make sure that everything is good. The lead lawyer said it would be, because he's not using it for um his own benefit, he's using it just for work. Like to drive his mom to the hospital, that it's just like taking a shovel, it is a work utensil.
Well, they're, they're saying no vehicle.
Nothing.
Interesting.
That's interesting, because it's not the way.
Yeah, it could be because it's, yeah, compared to like a. Yeah, a private versus. Yeah.
We don't need that, we don't need to get in trouble.
So from what I understand, eh, as long as it's not used. I know he was talking about another city where they allowed them to use it for personal use because it has the city logo on it. Just as a, you know, hey, we're out and about, even if they're getting groceries or whatnot, but they still didn't do anything. Tax wise.
I mean, I understand it, but I also think like, oh, yeah, go again, this waste of our tax dollars, like I totally see that, so.
That's how he said it was, it's just like him taking home a shovel.
That's what the words.
It's got lights, it's got public works front and back, yeah.
Alright, office hours. There's a discussion about um changing the office hours and maybe what that can potentially look like. Uh, when I was here visiting with Adam and Lisa on Monday, I was just kind of going over like the things that we had talked about, so they felt like. Um, it wasn't such a. And just some of the ideas that have been tossed around pertaining to the office hours and like changing them, extending them. Or even, you know, opening a little bit early, um, things like that, so. Just like, I, I personally don't feel like three o'clock is. Like that's just really early for a business that, you know what I mean, like. For people, you know, if somebody wants to come in to rent the blue building, you know, can they eat here before three type of thing, if they were told, or, I don't know. Usually don't run into the blue building part, because if we have, and Adam can just email it, and then they can, they can print office hours, they usually. Either mail it, like mail a chat, or they drop it in the box, we get a lot of stuff in the junk box. And then kind of do the. Then we should notify them to be before that is there, and we're never having trouble. Unless they totally just forget, but typically they can be here before we close.
And usually it's like a Friday situation, you guys are here during the time.
I mean, because even like, we make special arrangements if something else.
Somebody picks it up at a council meeting.
So an idea that was approached is doing like a pilot, like a trial of hours. Like if not making it a permanent, maybe doing like a month or just to kind of see.
I mean, like, like, if the hours were like eight to four thirty. With like a half hour lunch, like what, what are you guys?
I hate that about lunch, we do eight to four.
And no lunch?
And. We just sit and eat and do our work.
Well, you're here usually at seven thirty, right? I mean, if they do a seven thirty, because that would give people time sometimes, like if they worked in Ashes, and that would give you time, if you were here at seven thirty. They could come here at seven thirty, do anything they needed to do and.
So the last three, four weeks, I've been getting in at seven thirty, and I just turn on the lights and I leave the door unlocked, and I flip the sign is open. Because I will forget eight, I'm already busy. Yeah, and so I have not had a single person come in before eight, eight, before nine thirty AM anyways.
Somebody can be like, are you guys here most of the time for the meetings on the second Wednesday, because we could even do like, hey, second Wednesday from five to five thirty. There, you know, there could, there'd be somebody available. Yeah, like once a month.
Or the, just going from long opening time to like five o'clock. Because if there's two, then they can alternate. Maybe you'd have to take a lunch at, on that end of a day.
On that, just that specific Wednesday. Or every day.
Like doing those long days, like on the meeting days, doing that long day.
Not going to work a full eight, like you're going to work, probably take an hour lunch at that.
Typically on those Wednesday, we don't go home.
If you guys rotated it around, then you can get, you can't potentially get paid until five thirty, right? So from like three to five thirty. There's nothing to do, like. I don't know, I think that, I don't think it's out of the question, especially if you guys are still here, at least for that one day of month to be open, if we're here two days. Um, I know that sometimes you're probably, I mean, maybe getting last night.
I, we also talked about maybe doing like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday being open till four, to see how that works, or. Because what we can do is, I'm fine with the eight to four, we can try that for a month, and I can bring you guys numbers. You know, after three PM, we saw ninety people, after three PM, we saw two people.
There's some two people today, but like around the, well, usually ten, it's still, people still think it's a ten, so they still, I'm really busy, but. The other days were, were not.
What about staggering?
Such a bright contrast. So like I think, I think even a month might not, might be enough to get a good, that's not just because people wouldn't be used to it, but. If we change her, it was publicized, like. Different hours, and that might be a better way to get a good, like, yeah, you know, for like, you name the city. New, new city hours, or like trial city hours, to see what kind of feedback we get from.
I also kind of think people are gonna make arrangements to, you know, like, if you know you need your city, if you need, know you need your water turned on, you're gonna take. Yeah, it's a utility, people can. I mean, it's nice probably for like dog tags and everything, so, I mean, I get like having some flexibility in those times, but.
I would say our box out front sees more people than we do.
I was gonna bring up, um, typically in the past with dog tags, they did, they did a Saturday, like a, only like. Twenty hours, maybe nine to noon.
Okay.
Or something, it was like, it seemed to be like a random Saturday, February, I remember, just for those people that.
Yeah.
Don't have the option to take off or whatever.
My son might be a better use of time to do it at night.
Yeah, just do it like a Wednesday or something.
But like when we talked about like the whole dog tag thing, like. With the whole pit bull thing, like, could that be like one of Jeff's jobs, like, when he goes to work, if we want to put a picture with the dog tag? You know what I mean? Bring your pooch in.
They used to make them providing veterinarian record with the rainy shots and all that.
Yeah, but even have, your vet either just that mixed breed or they don't.
All the dogs just driving around and seeing who has what, it's, it's.
So that's.
Easier to notify, or you know.
Let's stick that on that, because the dog one was one of the ones that was something I first changed, because I do agree that, I think. When they're coming in to tag their dog, they, I think they should physically bring their dog.
Yeah.
And the city takes it, I know it's a pain for you guys, but then when we're seeing these random dogs that aren't tagged. Because you know, there are a lot of them, we'll have a little bit of, you know, more leverage for that as well.
Or somebody goes and tags a lot.
Those dogs were three miles away. So it wasn't no, it wasn't nobody in town. Yeah, it wasn't a city dog.
Do you guys want to make a motion on the office hours, do you want to? Um, table that until next meeting and come back with some different ideas. What you want to do with that one?
Do we need different office hours now, if the pool has? Like. The applicants coming in, can you email those applications too, and so they can either drop them in the drop box or, you know.
Well, when we heard Adam's position, I don't think I ever received one in person, they were. Called, emailed, when they went out, and then they came back and said, go ahead.
What are your guys' thoughts about the hours?
I'd rather stay eight to three, but I would be willing to, like maybe nights. I also, I think that you could stay eight to three, just because we've. Previous treasurers have had a reduced amount of hours, so I don't know that we would have to. I don't know.
We, we can do one that works, we can do three, and the other one works for ten to five.
And that's kind of what I was thinking too, because like.
When one comes in at seven, like you come in at seven thirty, and you work until three thirty or whatever, you become, whatever, you're like. You could flip around.
Complete one hundred percent honesty, I hate working till five PM, but I would feel terrible making me to work till five PM. But I would hate it, and my energy would just drop off, the amount of work that I do would just drop off. It's not even just because, it's just because it's five PM.
Well, but you could also flip, like one week when you do that.
I just don't think we'll have any traffic, because it's been. I just don't think we would have.
I don't think they're gonna have any traffic.
I think it'd be more beneficial to either come in at seven thirty, or do the, that's my personal opinion. Um, or do the Wednesday, Wednesday, once or twice a month.
I do feel like at least until three thirty though, because that leaves us. I would go past four. There might be certain times that you might have to exist, I don't know.
We'd probably rather stop at more than any of this.
Have you heard anybody complain about the office something?
I haven't heard anything.
It's working now.
I haven't heard anything.
A long time ago, before anybody of this. This year, I know that some people would just randomly leave whenever they felt like it, and so if you had cash money that you needed to pay. Are you getting forty hours in a week?
I'm right up there, so I'm getting like seventy three hours or so plus. So every two weeks, about seventy three ish.
Do you have to start your time at four thirty, or at seven thirty?
Yes, so uh depending on the week, I usually do about seven thirty till three. Three fifteen, somewhere around there.
And then do you think like, after all the computer and all that, like will your hours go down?
Let's hear the, if her hours are gonna go down, how will you increase office hours then, without staggering on so much that. She's not coming in till eleven, or you know what, whatever.
Even if we did a seven thirty difference, it's eight hours.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm just saying, right, we.
We can make a motion for.
Or if you guys want to kick around the idea, we can come back with. Compliments next time, if it's, if you want, if you feel comfortable making a motion, and it could just even be a temporary. I feel like if a motion is made, I would include like the start date of it.
Can we just go, like you said, seven thirty to, or seven thirty to three thirty, just for a couple weeks, see if Adam gets more.
Probably should be at least a minimum of a. It's gonna increase book traffic as much as just being available. You know what I mean?
If you have issues, I feel like they're gonna call you in between. And I feel like that's probably normal with everyone, if they have issues, well, they're gonna call you between eleven and ten. I got that time, yeah, so I feel like if you have issues, that's the time you're gonna call anyways.
I just feel like our office hours aren't typical office hours. You know what I mean? But that's been my, like, I've thought this for a long, long time, yeah, I've thought this for a long time, it's nothing new, like. Our office hours aren't typical office hours.
I mean, if our office hours so far is sufficient, that's what we have to look at, are our office hours sufficient? If they're sufficient, then why do we need to change?
It's harder to go back off or something. So if something doesn't want to be turned, then we back off.
Yeah, so you're too much time.
Well, I, because I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm in favor of leaving. Because I mean, we don't have the, we don't have the data, we don't have the information that says, hey, you know, we've got this huge problem because we're not open until four.
Right, right.
And so if we had a problem, if we had a problem, we had people coming to us and saying, this is a major problem because I can't get my work done with the city. Because they're being closed and all that, then yeah, I can see this, but, I mean, personally, I'd say with the hours we got.
I, I can tell you the amount of phone calls we've received after hours, I would say maybe ten this entire year. This entire year, and those left voicemails, I usually call back in the morning, and we have it all figured out and settled by that next day.
With the resolution pretty quick.
You plan on coming in at seven thirty or?
Pretty consistently.
Could we just move hours up then?
Maybe say we're seven thirty to three.
Because usually it's not something you need to be in here for an hour.
Because I'm, I'm usually in town by six thirty, and. I see maybe two or three people, they use the drop box. Shoot out town and do work. That's what they're used to, and they haven't had no complaints, and.
You want to make a motion at seven thirty to? Three or seven thirty, three thirty?
I'd rather do that than.
We'll leave it at eight too, like I, I just, that's just how I have felt for a long time. That we just don't have normal business hours.
Not that it matters, because I, I'm saying this, I feel like if you're trying like seven thirty to three thirty. Especially with this amount of data that's been coming in, um, and I have a point like that to you about. You're gonna have to prioritize those members and stuff, but. Um, and I was like that too about you're gonna have to prioritize those numbers and stuff, but.
Violet for two weeks or a month on seven thirty to three thirty and if we don't like it, we can move it back.
One concern, um, I'm all for it a hundred percent, but my only concern is that will put me at exactly eighty hours for the entire two weeks. Then we have the meetings if we're doing twice a month. If little things come up, it's gonna be all overtime. Currently, I'm not getting any, which makes everything look good, but.
I'm not, I'm, I am not against overtime that's justified. I'm against overtime if it's not just. If somebody's just trying to do overtime because they want more money, I have a problem. If you're productive while you're working and you have to work overtime to be more productive to get another little project done or whatever, first of all, I don't have a problem. I've worked a lot of overtime in my life, but.
You see that for a truck.
But, uh, so I mean, that's. I mean, that's, we understand that part of it. I mean, I, I'm speaking with myself. I understand that part. It's just whenever overtime gets excessive, for no reason, then you start really quick.
Because the other option would be like comp time, but there's nothing currently in our personnel policy. That'd be like if I do six hours at this meeting, I take six hours off early Friday.
We have to go overtime tonight.
Something on time is, you gotta be careful of.
Yeah.
And like, like you've been coming to like all the meetings and this. We're in a massive situation, but like when things get lined out, like will you still come to our meetings? I don't know. I don't, I don't know, like.
I don't see any special ones because. Especially if it doesn't pertain to.
Or just like that order, if you're just like to organize. Cause I was just thinking if you did the seven thirty to three thirty on a Wednesday night that there's a meeting, if Lisa's not coming to the meeting, like you come in at noon and she opened at seven thirty.
Gotcha.
But also overtime, if it's deserved, it's deserved.
Yep, that's my only concern. But she would have to be here for every meeting. I touch no money.
Well, but I mean, a lot of stuff we have doesn't, like special ordinances, that doesn't relate to it.
Yeah. Ordinances. Probably a split thing.
So I mean, I'm gonna make a motion that we go with seven thirty to three thirty.
What's your, what's your start date and ending? It's just like a trial.
We started the trial period temporary office hours would be seven thirty to three thirty starting Monday, March seventeenth. And ending four weeks thereafter.
Thirteen, maybe four.
Very close. Will that give us a meeting in between, right?
Yes.
Do I have a second? That was a motion. Do you have a second?
Would you guys, oh, go ahead, can you sign?
No, I was, um, that motion was made, so we have a second. All in favor?
Not.
Any opposed?
Would you like me to make a flyer with our new sign?
Yeah.
Then you can just sign it.
They're not basically.
Implement weather policy?
We definitely.
Do we have one for open?
No.
Sure. Why rainbow list?
Why?
If you want to, is there something that we want to base it on? Do you want to base it on?
I, I looked earlier at Horton, it doesn't have one in its ordinances. Olton doesn't have one in its ordinances. And Valley Falls didn't have anything either. So I looked and the league doesn't have anything like inclement weather particularly that we could base things off of.
Tell you what, why don't we table that one until, we'll figure out on the table and we'll tell everybody to get some further research around it. Do I know that there are some around?
Like, like when I looked at the county, you know, if the roads were like they had been. Um, County Courthouse, they'd shut down. And a lot of times they would base off what the state would do, you know, like the Capitol would be there, they would shut down. It's just.
Would it be fair that like the city of Bethlehem followed? Like if Ashson County shut their offices down, then the city of Bethlehem.
Especially, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be so bad if they lived in town, but where they have to travel.
That's Ashson County.
Yeah.
Ashson County, they have to travel.
Yeah.
You don't want to base it on Ashes and city.
No, no, county.
Yeah, the county.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you don't want based on schools, specifically they're shutting down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna bring another table on some, did you have anything to add?
No, I mean, no, no, like do we, do we need a look for policy or like we?
It wouldn't be one of the. Cause I live on one of the worst roads in Ashes and County to try to get away from my house in this morning.
But you just come two days early and.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's gonna be bad, I have to, because there's no way I can get to town. I can't go by your grandpa's place.
We have several policies that we've developed.
Like add to the personnel handbook?
Yeah, well, some of this, some of this personnel and also stuff is not personnel, have several policies. So maybe this is one of them that we put in like a policy, um, discussing writing for a policy procedure report or something like that.
I could see this being, excuse me, I could see adding to the personnel policy under like administration, um, telling, like, how to call off like hours of work or inclement weather.
Okay. Meeting.
That may be off.
Look at who won that one. Here, no, straight in the meetings, like when you.
Oh, we haven't decided when to post it or not, the post that if you're gonna make a motion or.
When to post in the meeting.
The video.
Usually yes, but this first one, um, yeah, I wanna get the software because I have to splice and make sure that YouTube takes it and yeah.
But going forward from this one, this one, not including.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Can we, can we see that I will have it on YouTube, but YouTube has to do its own thing to approve it, right? So I can have it on uploaded.
By Monday following that.
Yeah, to that Friday, which is fine. And then YouTube has to do its own decision thing.
As long as I have it there by Friday.
But like, can, we can give you, give them like a couple meetings here to get that all worked down, right?
Yeah.
I am just very happy that we have.
Hmm.
We have it up here.
Code enforcement position. Yes. So we talked about this. Um, like in the work session, did you get all the core courtesy later?
I don't, I emailed it. Yeah, I don't think.
So our thought behind the code enforcement officer was someone, not Jeff. Uh, uh, not like, so they're not attacking you, you can take someone that doesn't live in the city, come in once or twice a month. Write the, do the reports, but yeah. And then it's not on you, you're not that guy. You know what I mean?
Totally independent when you say.
You'd be an employee, of course.
Well, he'd be an employee, but he lives outside. Here's, here's she lives outside. No, it's. We were, the name that I mentioned before last, I said it in the meeting. What is working to do for a point? Fair Play Department? What is not, oh, the Department of Police, what, two either than having an officer that might be.
Actually, the office is not.
Is it Jimmy?
Used to be.
He used to be. I don't suggest that.
Such a code enforcement, it's just like what we're trying to do. I don't know who does. I can call Wes and find out. Since he's.
Wes here.
Needs to be somebody outside.
Outside.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
That's what like Blue Islands, they said, who blew rap.
Do you want to go to the?
You just remember about that. The Blue Rapids, and then that's what they said, that was the most important thing they found was, because they said whenever they had somebody in the city doing that, there's too much fingerprint and you're saying here, you're targeting.
Right. Right.
And then when they took it outside the city, that took all that away.
Yeah. Cause you had nobody associated with the officer or whatever.
So are we gonna get more information on that and revisit? We'll put that in the whole business when it comes. What, what do we need to do with that though?
I mean, assign a person.
I mean, do you want to?
Call Wes later in the morning to see what they're doing now. And they, they, and if, if they're not as, if they're like an independent person, if we can get their contact, maybe come up and.
He's on a motor bill. I wonder what they do.
Yeah, I'd call Steve.
Yeah.
Person in county kind of hovers in there because there's a.
I'll make them call the Kansas League of Net Pounds, it's a topic of. But talk currency, who knows? Maybe the cities that are our size, we can talk to and see it.
Yeah.
I can call Steve down in Nortonville and Wes in the morning and see what they do. If they, if they, I know North or Valley would have to have somebody.
And they might.
But if they have their police department, maybe one of those police officers would take a little part in it.
Yeah, also that's one you figure out how much.
And maybe that's another question.
Yeah.
That's only a once a, you have a once a week, we've got to make it so work time. I would say like even if we decided to do like a once a week, then it still would happen, but maybe once about be really short. But we also need to see. Uh, weekly email updates. I'm in a strange position here, guys. Like this transition thing, I'm probably speaking way more than I should, I'm putting, I'm putting way more than I should. The weekly email updates, again, I think that was a lot of the.
We didn't know.
Information dropping, like, yeah, weekly requests and then just get ghosted. Um. And I think a lot of this was like the big projects, the, you know, the audits, the reports, the. Um, transitioning into Central Square kind of thing. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
On that, so like the weekly updates, if there's not progress right now or there's not. I mean, there should be a little bit of progress with some of the stuff, but is that what you, are you?
Like a general overview instead of a detailed report?
Yeah.
General, general overview, great. I mean, I think we still need something to tell us.
Yeah.
Because we're, I mean, we're kind of having a little.
But because we have so much going on, there's just so much.
Yeah, there's so many, many parts right now.
But I don't think we need to get the weeds about.
Well, I'm like, my perception of it, my idea, like what I personally was kind of wanting is more of just so we understand, I've got a timeline with. Specifically the transition into Central Square, like what percentage would you say is complete at this time? Kind of, you know, just.
That's it, let's say, like, yeah. Or if there's like a major thing that happened.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be.
Would it be all right if during the meeting, um, for like the weekly email updates, we come up with your guys' top things you want to follow that month? Is that an option? If you guys say, I want to follow what's happening in Central Square every week, then I know, and it's in my mind, my notes. That that is something I'm going to get to you every week, so I don't have to guess, I don't have to try and keep track.
I would say like Central Square, like the audit. Um.
Like right now would be like cool.
Cool. Central Square audit, cool.
Yeah, because even if you send me, like, go only think about it, you send me an email Monday and you're like, hey, can you?
I thought three, we could do like the top three.
Yeah, update us on this each week, then I will have a note. Because right now, the last two I stand, I'm just kind of trying to put in the things that I.
You're guessing what we want, you're guessing what we want.
And I'll put an update on how it's going with YouTube updates.
YouTube updates, okay.
And maybe just like what, what you guys need, like something, you know, like if there's something you guys need or.
I drink rum.
Struggling with this, like, you know, you're like, if there's like anything that like we can help make things better for you in there.
Yeah, and that's another thing. I mean, if you guys, I'm wrong with this, there's something that you're really struggling with and need help. Please, please, don't hesitate. Ask us, ask Katie, ask myself, anybody, because I mean.
Most of the struggles we're having is just getting the other people to answer the phone. So if we reach out to Central Square, getting them on a, a phone call, getting them to answer the ticket back or whatever. Nightmare with G Works today, it was about forty minutes long. It's just trying to get them to understand or, so a lot of the struggles. Just a lot of the struggles are like us communicating with others. Like not with you guys, but like other companies to get this stuff.
Consumer services are the thing.
Yeah.
So I guess.
We'll send them, I think each other's thing to send the top three. Then we'll put it together. We're not gonna say you're gonna have to pay. But put three out of those.
Priorities. I would never have bothered to put the pool, so I'm glad you said that.
But that would just be for. Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And just like the YouTube update until it's done, like. Say you get your, your, so the next six months.
Okay. Daily work log expectations. I table that.
Well, no, I mean, I, my first moment of focus out, like, Jeff, we, what we need to do, or, I mean, it's a combination of us, I mean. Let's come up with some kind of a structure, some kind of a plan thing, because, I mean, like in the winter time, you're down a lot. So maybe come up with a structure saying, okay, we're gonna be maintenance on this, 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 and this, and this. Have it done by the state so that we're ready for the spring. And we're like on the pumps, we need to get these pumps maintained by the state, the state, the state.
Well, like you need.
Have some kind of a schedule.
Yeah.
It's not so much as a law, but it's a schedule that says, here's the, here's item, here's what it should be completed by, and yes, it was completed by the state. And then that way, I mean, like, in order to cold patch it, you know, do it in Rosewood. So that way, I mean, you've got it for your reference and it puts you into a structured. Um, environment, you have a structured environment and you know what needs to be done and when it has to be done by, so therefore you can do it and have it completed.
Right.
So we're not surprised two months down the road and say, oh, I forgot all about that. Yeah, right.
Adam, have you seen something like that for the city clerk?
There should be something like that with.
Monthly, the items that, we talked about that.
No, no, I just, I had ordered like a little packet from, um, the municipalities, and like it was in there, it was like. Eat like each month, like, these are the things that the city clerk, like they're state reports, whatever they are. But that might be helpful for you. Just we can say that.
Well, they have it, I mean, like same thing with, with Lisa's job, I mean, you know, like, this is monthly, this is when you gotta do this, I mean, because that's how we did it. You know, whenever we had people. Structure, you structure, then there's no guesswork, I mean, everybody knows what they gotta do, and then they gotta do it.
And I get them from like taking each year, I have, I have a full year. Every month I have two separate color form samples I do. And like, today, when I took samples, I took three samples in today, because. Testicide sample, that I'll take directly from the well, before it enters the system. So that way they can monitor. Which we shouldn't have that problem, because we're not close to any fields or anything, so, you know. But that, they can monitor our, our groundwater coming out. And, and then like, in, I think it's like September, I have to go to the school, and it's even more test. Make sure there's a whole bunch of stuff that's not in the water.
But I mean, it, it really does work well, you know, in environments where they don't have that, like in environments where they do. If you're in an environment where you have a structured schedule, that says, okay, on this day, I need to do this report, this day, I need to have this report done. And you go down, and they're like, you know, some of them are quarterly, and you kind of, you can tend to forget them. But if you have it listed, you're gonna check that, we're gonna be on your basis, and then you know, hey, this, this stuff has to happen.
And it might be as simple as, I'm sure you do it, like sound equipment, you know, run it in the winter. You know, run those a little bit in the winter, don't.
Right, yeah, no, and I think that's.
So I think maybe instead of, one, maybe we have to, that, write down all your reports that you need. All you need that, you know, like that, then submit messages, so we can ask them, see, hey, we've had a little structure here going now. Because that way we can provide new input, and also provides us input. So we get asked, well, you know, this, it's important.
Well, and just like you said, that, what was it, the pumps, they were supposed to be cleaned every so, like, every year.
I have, yeah, right, yeah. And, and I'll bring that up, cause it's down the way a little bit, um, on that too.
I mean, I think that would be, instead of logs, just come up with a listing of all the reports and everything, and the date that they're due. And the quarter, every six months, and like. Come up with something like that. It's a one-time thing, I mean. But I know, like, we saw that one that you got from Kansas Water, um, the one that, you know, it's been sent to them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's supposed to have been done like every quarter, I think, or something like that, but I don't think it's been done for a while. And we're gonna get in trouble on that one if we don't get it done. I don't know if you guys know what we're talking about or not.
Waiting for somebody to help me fill it out.
But we, I mean, I think Janet has already planned on that one.
Yeah, I did, I'm not positive, I'm not positive on that, I just know I wasn't trained on it, so it never was in. Yeah, it wasn't in my radar until we started getting.
And like, if you need training on that, we can probably. And Deb, cause she did that in Florida. Oh, she didn't do it again. But I mean, that's the kinda thing we don't wanna fall behind on, because it makes us look bad, and that's the state. And we don't wanna look bad in the state.
I got calls.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying, that's, that's the kinda thing, that if we have this list, they don't go get unnoticed. You know, you have to do it.
I'm learning every month what to do that month.
Okay. Uh, the sewer expenses, tap and dig to main line. I don't remember where specifically that was in.
It's part of our sewer ordinance, and we just wanna make sure we're still recouping the amount. Yes, is that covering the amount? Like, how much does it really truly?
I don't know, because I haven't had to buy any taps. Because they're putting in a force main, or whatever, yeah, force main, so they're, they're having all that, yeah, yeah. I, I'll make a phone call to theirs, um, and see what the prices are on them. And if they, if they're over a hundred bucks, so, so the hundred dollars is. Basically, I give the contractor the tap, the clamps, they dig it, they're responsible. For anything they do. The two fifty, is that I have to get down in the hole and put a tap. That's how that's split up. And I'm pretty sure Portland is the same way, cause I remember, um, there was two different ways of doing it. But still. That's what, I'll make a phone call and make sure at least a hundred dollars.
Two fifty, your wages have gone up considerably since two thousand five.
And that's not, um, yeah, I mean, it doesn't take fifteen minutes.
That's what's captured in the cost.
Right, and that's why. And that's why I encourage people, hey, every guy does, he's gotta dig to the main anyway. He's gotta uncover the main to get to either the original tap, or. They have to dig to the main regardless. For new line. It don't matter, they have to dig to the map, we do not do anything. Unless it's right on top of the, that's it. So, there's options that sometimes, you know, if a contractor doesn't have a tap for clamps, and we have one. Okay, you know, but like I say, I need to make sure that a hundred dollars, at least for the tap. Is still, okay, if not, then, then before you guys finish this up, and I'll have it. Okay, so I'll have, I'll have it before then. And then you guys can change that.
We just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Um, documentation of information, that was next. Sorry, 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 sorry.
And I'm trying to skip that.
No, no, no. No, I saw Steve around this one, I, no.
Sometimes it's just a long time between the monthly meetings, especially with everything we have going on, and when we only have. A special meeting for ordinances only, we can't do anything else, so if we just had two regular meetings a month, or. Anything needs to be addressed.
I don't know how we did it the last time, but when initially, we had like. Five months where we did. No, I think we just said that we were gonna have a special meeting, and it wasn't gonna be forever. But it wasn't a special meeting, it was like, it was, it had an agenda, we just had to like do a bill approval, because. Yeah, and we do a resolution to have two regular meetings.
I mean, and is this a temporary six-month thing, until we get all of our ducks in a row, all of our ordinances updated?
Six months will be out, also.
Till the end of the year? We worked so damn hard, I wanna change like, us finish these ordinances out, and then we'll get back on. I don't know, how's the, how's the right way to do that with meetings? They do a temporary one for.
I don't think this is, uh. That big obstacle is maybe for making the meeting, because the important thing, whether they're an open meeting, is that. Anyway, if you want to have, uh, an ordinance, confusion, or just an optical revolution, through such a meeting, you can do that.
It's gonna be as simple as we make a motion from April until the, until December, we have.
I, I think that, I think that second meeting will be a special.
The second meeting be a special?
Yeah, then if you wanna have. General issues. Uh, you know, you're, you're asking a pretty specific question, I can check the statute.
Or instead of, un- uh, until we get our, like, website up and going, if it's as simple as just putting in. For the meeting, and just insert a specific for, just, uh, just add a general purpose or. Until. There's that one publication fact.
But we could just set up.
But you won't have to do that after.
After you adopt the resolution, right?
Well, we had, in two months, when our charter ordinance takes effect, then you'll just have to put it on your website, and then it'll probably have costs.
Right, that's ours, yeah.
But you're saying we don't have to. But we can make just a motion, I think, to do it, and we wouldn't have to do it. Cause we do it ordinances from here and south forever, ever, until they do it again, until they change it again.
The, the ordinance, uh, excuse me, the state statute requires that you set your meeting dates by. Which requires publication, every unit is required, as we've done, even if you have special meetings. Yeah, so you can do the process of just having special meetings, because you do a period of time, if you want to do that. Uh, but if you want to, uh, if you wanna change it to just having two meetings for, forever, then I think you can adopt it. No one needs to use forever.
So, do we have to have a specific if we do for April and May, if we do a second meeting for both those months?
Um, I mean, I, the statute says if you have to specify an object, a purpose, or the special meeting. I, I, I think you've met that, and I think you could mean that in broad terms, but then, what could we say about having a special meeting for. Resolution of some issues.
And processes and procedures of the city.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that I think would technically, the resolution.
How many months do we wanna do it?
Well, we also have a meeting already that's approved at the end of this month, and then we have the next. April one, so we can even set up. But I'm saying that our next regular meeting, we wanna, like, depending on how the next meeting for ordinances goes. If you want. April meeting, and we're not, we're not missing. The documentation of sewer rates for schools. I, I wanna pull that one.
What, Julie sent it to me. To the school. Like what they paid me?
Um, I'm gonna let Adam explain what he did, but I'm also. Going to ask, like, this is gonna be the information we need when we do the, your ordinance. Set it and bring it with you.
So everyone has a folder, inside of this folder, I was able to go back to nineteen seventy-nine. To when they first decided how much to charge the high school. From there, you'll see the different ordinances and the meeting minutes, how they arrived at those numbers. It starts off, well, yeah, it starts off sounding like they used, they needed those funds.
What, was your dad a city council member?
Yeah, when I was two.
It started off with, um, them sounding like they needed the funds in order to apply for loans or grants. Then it moved from there to needing the funds to pay for services. To actually have an income as a city, and then the last couple, it just. Increased with time. So, all of that. Where did seventy dollars come from? Uh, we have no idea.
So again, that was gonna be hopefully.
Okay, so this went from.
Five hundred and fifty dollars to nine hundred and twenty-nine.
Or from seventy-five dollars to three hundred and fifty?
Uh, there was a one thirty in there.
Yeah. It should show up.
The very last, the very last one, the most highest, it was eighteen.
Again. This should be beneficial. For the meeting, the next meeting when you're discussing this summer.
Do you remember any, talk about any of that? They put in a third looking. Because my brother built it, but, um. So I, I don't, I didn't know if that was just to help with the cost, I'm sure.
I don't know, I was off of, I was on the city council in the late eighties.
America time.
And I don't. When I was going through the ordinance, through this book. They are classifying the school as a heavy institutional user, because they actually produce over two percent more. To the sewer than the city does. Is how I gathered that.
So all the households, they produce two percent more than all the households.
That was retail. Is that just for the high school?
That's for all the, all the schools. That's for all the schools, all the schools were.
Is it?
For class costs. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't see it.
Because the new, the newest ordinance had. Class one is residential and class two is commercial, and then it has a little clause in there about. Residential and. The schools. But that was the part that didn't have that section in there. This was repealed.
My question to you is, do you feel the schools use two percent more than the whole city?
Two, because so, so I went to the board office and had them. Just this year. Right now, this schooling. There's two hundred and forty-eight kids and thirty-five staff in the high school. According to them. And that's not including the, the custo- or the custodians or the kids and stuff. No, I'm only sorry, yes. Two ninety-four at the high school. Two hundred and eighty-three at the elementary. So that's, that's over the population of the town, I think that's where the two percent. I think that's where they're coming up with this two percent that I found. More than what our city as a whole.
It makes sense to me, and I, again, I thought it'd be higher, so.
But why, I mean.
What's their water usage though? Compared to the. Like, this is just sewer.
Yeah.
So, all. We're getting onto, there is a. Meter report, that's what, that's what's coming up, but. This will be like. I fear we're gonna go down an ordinance rabbit hole, that is what our next meeting is supposed to be for, but, um.
I guess that would be what I'd be curious, is actually what their usage is compared to the whole town, is it, does that theory hold true?
But you also have to take into consideration, we have diners view apartments that are one month use thirty thousand gallons as well. And they're only being charged that, they're not being charged that heavy industrial usage.
That's great.
Because it's a housing.
It doesn't satisfy, like, if, if they want the trees to have their meters like that, like.
Right.
You're bringing in thirty thousand gallons a month, or, you know.
Adam, thank you for digging this up.
Really.
Wow, that's before your turn.
Oh, yeah.
The wooden. No, the books.
Thank you.
So, as far as water usage, it depends.
You can just, oh, are you doing, is this part of your report?
Well, it was, it's part of this sewer thing too, cause I'm getting asked about the water. Usage on it. It really depends. On the timeframe. But I think the elementary school actually uses a lot of water. And especially so. Especially so when. Especially similar to that fall.
But is the football field tied to that?
That's, yes.
Because there water in the football field.
Yeah.
Which also does not go down the.
Well, but I'm also gonna make. I say yes. Bought every meter. And he's gonna tell me which meters do what for that school, cause we don't know. Like the high school, they have a double week. They have a high and low for you. And the elementary school, they just have a standard.
Are you gonna be there the next week? Two weeks? They're gonna be in care.
No.
They're gonna be enjoying themselves probably, you know.
Wednesday night is Margaritaville.
Do you, so, your ordinance is. Maybe the sewer one would be beneficial. One for depth to get that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe if review and have questions, but maybe pick a different one then for the next. Just a suggestion, I'm not saying that's what you have to do, by any means.
I mean, I guess. I don't know, should we pick a different date to do it the next day? Well, because you're gonna be gone, he's gonna be gone, you're gonna be gone.
I'll be here. I will be gone for the twenty-sixth, yes, I had to switch, I had to switch a date for the.
There's, there's nothing saying we have to push it, right?
Do you have to have, like, if we've already put it in a thing, can we cancel it? I don't even know what you guys are talking about.
There's an attorney general opinion that says that. That essentially says you're just showing up and you're waving and you're objections.
Okay. So cancelling twenty-sixth? Yeah, I think that's as much as I can do. We're gonna be six o'clock in the morning.
Oh, okay. Especially not Monday two zero and. Early bird catches a worm.
Since August, I get at most three hours of sleep a night.
Because, not because of us.
Well, it could be.
Well, you know, it's a mix of things. And my, my stuff going on, you know.
Does anybody have a suggestion on a meeting between now and the next meeting? Does that make sense?
On like next week?
I don't blame you.
That's kind of the projects for the.
Was the second?
Of April? What do we need to do to? Special? Just stay, reschedule it from this date to this day?
Kathy, does April second work for you? April, the, the, it's like.
Instead of this, the twenty-sixth. That's what I think.
Yep, well, we, yep, it works, April second.
Yeah. Flexible. Justin, that work for you, April second?
I go day to day.
It's my birthday, maybe I'll bring some like, okay. No, I'm a second, I'm a second.
I know.
What else am I gonna do? They just guaranteed entertainment for her birthday.
So.
Wait to get to sixty-five?
Thirty-nine, I ain't seen thirty-nine for. Seven years.
I hope that we postpone the. March twenty-sixth. Special meeting to be April the. The second, this day. Yes, five thirty.
Call on paper. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Continuing right along, documentation of information that was sent to Christine for the twenty-three account instructions. Already talked about, already kind of talked about that. And having to hook up to the Olson Theater to get the software. Is everybody satisfied with that one? Not credit card purchases and itemized receipts.
So like in the future, we have like a lot of purchases on a credit card?
I usually have them, I just have them included.
Okay.
Yeah, just include them. That's all.
We already kind of talked about that, right?
Yeah.
A little bit, so I do wanna go a little bit more in detail. Um, yes, I keep a maintenance log on all, all equipment. Um. Like the small equipment, not the long ones, but like the small pumps and, and stuff like that, the generators. Um, any stuff like that. Is once a year, regardless, it doesn't matter, it's once a year, no matter what. Um. The equipment is.
Would there be any benefit to do it, like, right here?
These are all the ones that I may use once or twice, um. But, um. The equipment is every three hundred hours. And we'll set and do all that. Vehicles every five thousand, I think, is what. I just go off of when it tells me to change oil. And knows it's time to change. Um. Now, well, I don't get none of that yet. So like. A little more in depth, like the sewer pumps. The lift station on the west. They're self-contained and they're in the water, I don't see them. The only time I know if they don't work is when the pit goes. Um. And I don't really have a good way of pulling them myself. That's why, when I do have an issue, Lloyd comes up, he's got a winch. And he, he can pull them so much easier, and, and nine times out of ten, he's gotta fix it. Uh, those pumps over there, there's one reserve. And same thing for them. If, if the light comes on or the pit's full, then there's an issue. But I look at them every morning. And, you know, if I hear water running, I know they're working. So.
Uh, was it, was it, was that one other tail, because it hadn't been inspected or. Well, it hadn't, it hadn't been cleaned or something.
That's, those are the wells. And so. This is where I was coming with that, um. And which tall, Alexander pump will be there. And they're the ones that put our number three well back yet. Put a new pump in. I will get with him while I'm there and. See what he's got for maintenance schedule for the wells. Number three should be good for not, you know. But number four, I want. To eventually get pulled. And have him inspect the pump. And then, um, they can run a camera down in the well and actually see. What the casey looks like, make sure everything still looks good. And then, if it's just, um, maybe clean the screen on the pump, set her back in the hole, and we're, and we're done.
That would end a little work, didn't it?
Neither one of them pumps were done until we have number three fixed. So.
And how often should they be?
At least once a year, they need to be pulled and checked.
But you shouldn't, you can't pull those.
No, I cannot. That takes a drill, that takes a drill. I think so, yeah.
Right, that was a well pump, so I think.
Yeah, we was.
Cause like every time I turn my water faucets on, I get stuff, like said, every, every time. Like if I wanted a glass of water, I'd give it.
It would, it would be easy to go back and look to see what I built from. Real water was, cause I started running, or pulling water from them to help with the tower.
You need to get on that one quickly. You should have done that one soon. Cause those are too, too expensive to be replaced in every.
Are we good on that one, sixteen, we're good? Uh, update on, they have a transfer to Central Square.
Um, like I said earlier, we were waiting for that quote. So that way we can find out exactly what information needs to go where. Cause we can put, we could put whatever you guys want, wherever you want it, but it's. Uh, it's not gonna make any sense, and we want it to make sense, we wanna do it right. The first time, and it's taking us longer than we thought, but.
In contact with Jacobism, right?
So how are you, I, I, this is a question for now. How are you guys able to issue checks or payment bills and payroll?
Through G, G Works. So the main issues we're having with G Works are like moving residents into where they live currently. Um, or. Balancing the, the accounts, so it makes sense. You know, there are weird issues that make a big picture issue. But the other things, like sending out bills, paying one bill, sending out checks, paying on accounts, those sort of things. We can still do and keep the city running. It's just all of the other. Difficult things we're having, but. Yeah, boiled down, we can still keep the city running, laundry works. And that's what we're doing. I called it, or I sent. When I sent in the quote, it was two weeks ago. So I, I attached a note today to say, you know, what's the progress on this? Like, we wanna start as soon as possible. And it's just.
Are we? In the same kind of.
I hope not.
Except they're already not returning their system.
I know that I sent an email to the. To one of the people I talked with to get the original quotes. To get looked at, and it's just been waiting for that one guy, so.
So until that happens, you guys can't transfer anything.
We have the accounts and the account lines all set up. So where do we go from here?
Where does payroll pull its numbers from, where does? The other five different things that it's asking us to do, which one do we do first? It's just trying to figure out where to start. Yeah, we got general ledger, cause that. Is probably where everything starts from, but what now, it's like building a house. Foundation is the general ledger, we don't know what part of the program is. Framing, we don't know what part is roof. And we did, we tried a couple of different ones, but they turned out to be something different that. We couldn't get out of, um, to go back to do something else, like. It, when we go to try to back out, it says, you must complete line item sixteen before you can cancel.
Let's see, go back to the program, a different program to find out what sixteen is.
Yes. So it's.
You'll get it.
You'll get it.
You'll get it.
Sure, replacement fund. Oh, yeah, I just assumed that because they didn't get the grant. It's on hold. Sorry. I should have said that. So now we're waiting again on that.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll get with Jason.
Now on to sewer replacement. Those, those are the, yeah, that's the CD amateur.
It hasn't been established.
Yeah, it's matured today.
So, are you gonna reroll it, is that what we do?
I wait for you to tell me.
What?
Immature today.
Immature today?
Yeah. Our first meeting.
You're the first line of the tents.
That kinda goes into the certifications and recertifications, so some of them are, need to get recertified. So is, that's something that the city would hope to pay for, to get a big cert, recertification of like a one day.
I think so, because we, we're doing the certification, we did it last year. They went ahead and, cause you guys hadn't decided yet, so the ones that wanted to be lifeguards went ahead and dropped their certification. And then we, the city reimbursed them.
Do we wanna do a reimburse, I think that, I think the same signs for some lifeguards, they want to do it, they need to be recertified and they can't.
I think we can go ahead and pay for them, just do the same kind of contract.
Yeah, same thing we did last time.
We, we have. The certification is not as expensive as the initial. Something like that. And we have that on paper, right? Like in a policy that, about the, if we pay for it upfront.
Yeah, it was on.
Yes, last year, when, yeah, when we talked about it last year, yeah, it was, I'm pretty sure.
And they sign papers, do you still have that form?
Probably.
Okay.
We have to sign the contract.
And so I would do the recertification as a separate form. Returning them certifications, something.
So I'll like, I'll promote that. Do you also wanna put it in there, cause I noticed I have like successful completion of the year, do you wanna put a minimum amount of hours there, expected to work?
What is like a good number?
I don't know, I just, I know that there was a couple that maybe only worked one day a week.
Those were the, I think those were the ones that subbed when she needed. And so there was like, just say. They, they were either over their hours or they were working too many hours, so they had to, um, use that one person that was a sub.
Thanks for stopping in Nancy. Bye Nancy.
Thanks a lot, I mean.
We've got kids going on vacations with their parents and stuff.
First it happens, but.
I guess my, my bear kids are about the age we'll have. Uh, this was even though big enough here to bring up, but this is where my thought process goes, is if we have some that work. Once a month. And some that are working like five days a week.
Well, they're making the money, you know, as well.
Right, but. They'd also be using their certification to go other places, it's kind of boring, I guess, might be, like, again, I don't think that's a. I've got a worst case scenario, I can't help it. Hey, I worked like that last year, dated, that's just that she was a sub.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't think she worked.
And I don't think we paid for her certification.
No, she was here, yeah, we didn't pay for that, she was already certified.
Chemicals, cause that pool has to run no matter what.
Cause, I don't know. We can't have people swimming in there. I cannot even.
So Katie Filburn brought in a resignation letter. And what, what did it, did it say why? Did she, did she have any indication of like why or?
I can't recall through the top of my head. I'm putting in my resignation as pool manager.
Was it reset?
No. It's a while. Yeah, no, no exact reason, like.
The city council or whatever.
Um, do we want to like try to set a goal date to get applications, so we know where we're at?
Like, so how long does it take to research, to recertify and certify?
Well, the problem is gonna be trying to find classes.
Right.
Because the classes are, yeah, cause there's a class that, last weekend. There was a class last weekend, there's a class this weekend. Yeah, and I had some, I had some information about, and like, let's see. I was gonna call, I have to do my.
So is it just? What is involved in their certifications, is it just CPR, first aid?
Guarding them, like it's.
Okay, so I will make a, make another phone call.
You can do it too, you can do it Friday.
I'll call, um. The EMT director.
They're very afraid of why, cause this isn't.
Oh, I know.
It has to be, it's like guarding and it has to be probably through the red cross, because they're the only ones that.
And the why I think you do it for like the sixteen, so the fifteens have to go to the, to the right box.
Red cross, I think. Yes, uh.
Initiative, be, have initiative to maybe help us out.
Um, do we wanna say have a certified lifeguard instructor that would absolutely help us out? And I don't think they're gonna have that.
There's a city that actually doesn't have water rescue. A water rescue team in the fire department, cause they have to be trained. Cause they.
Might not be certified. But I remember that would be a red cross.
Rescues on the.
Do we want a date? Um, so today is the twelfth, we meet again on. The second is kind of our special meeting, so if you say you want them by Monday, April seventh for May ninth meeting, or April ninth meeting? Yeah. Can you run a call Wes about that enforcement officer? He was looking at his page and giving a blank stare, like I don't know what.
Well, I'm just, no, I knew what I was calling Wes for, I was just figuring out where I was putting.
Um, so I, I have had the kids ask how much. And sadly, they are comparing us to Atkinson and. The golf course, cool. Yeah, one of them was like thirteen dollars an hour, and I know that we can't pay thirteen dollars an hour, what did we pay last year? Nine, nine fifty, you won't even, you know.
Nine fifty for the ones that were.
No, absolutely not, we do not need a pool house attendant.
Well, if we might.
To do something regarding the pool. Two, three lifeguards in them.
If we only get two lifeguards, we may have to.
Again, if they return again?
Get two lifeguards.
I think that's how we had it set up.
Well, I don't know what the number is, but.
We can't, we can't compete with.
Well, we're never gonna have a lifeguard for more than. I wish we had a manager that would stick around multiple years.
Been here for how long, Katie's been part of it for.
Me and her started doing it like seventeen.
Sixteen, fifteen.
For a while. I mean, like that, me and Katie work well together.
Are you just manager, co-manager? Manager, co-manager, or assistant manager?
We were just like managers.
Like what?
Oh, you were equally?
Yeah, yeah. But I wonder if I could talk Katie into it, if I could find somebody. I just wonder. Uh, any help?
You want me to send you the resignation?
That is a lot, like you, you don't want to do, but I feel like. So like the next part said, uh, like ages, hold on one second, oh, sorry. Does there have to be a motion for a pain for that, or is that just like a general consensus, or like a consideration? We have here, I just wanna make sure. We're doing it the right way. For tonight, I'll make motion, I make motion that we pay for certifications and recertifications for lifeguards for the twenty five summer. Upfront, with the intent to include it in a personal handbook. Get the stipulations in the handbook, with, with stipulations that they must complete the summer working. And that's the course. You got that?
Okay, I'll think of that.
Roll in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, moving on to the manager, assistant pool manager, agent friend, the manager position has to have a high school diploma. That's what it says in the application.
I don't think that you can put like actual age requirements on it, cause then it looks a little weird. But if you put like, two years higher degree, that kind of puts a limit on the, on age that can apply.
Uh, that wouldn't necessarily.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind getting graduate or senior, being manager, but it's rare that they're even ready for that position. Like, we'll, we'll know the kids if they're ready or not.
I think you have to be an adult.
Yeah.
And that's, but what, does the assistant say that? So.
There is no assistant.
Oh, there. And I agree, I, I, I can't get past that, I think there is one that has. Expressed interest in it, that I, I think knows the ins and outs and can do all of the workings of it. My concern is.
Well, what are the laws against like running machinery, you have to be eighteen, don't you, probably to be the kid, like you do all the chemical stuff, but there might be a chemical. Thing that they would have to, so you would come on the weekends.
Yep, that, that I've had put in the, in the policy, but they are not to touch, the only thing they do is test the.
But my, my concern with that would just be the patrons not respecting the fact that it's such a young person. Trying to tell them what to do, essentially.
Like a sixteen or seventeen year old being assistant manager.
Again, the one that I know that is kind of expressed, I think would be, I think. On the inside can do all of the things, the money, the running, the scheduling, the, it's just. The appearance from any potential conflict.
And dealing with other. So probably other peers and that leadership.
Yeah.
Could get ugly. Yeah, but if you put them with a manager that was seasoned and. Supporting, yeah, then it might be fine, if, you know, or maybe like a.
Is that, do, I mean. Well, if I don't know that that's really a decision that needs to be made.
I think for a manager manager, it would probably be better for them to be an adult. Over the age.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but again, they're gonna apply, but it doesn't mean they're gonna give it to them. I know most of them, we'll be able to tell the kids ready for that position or not, so I don't mind them being able to apply for it.
I just don't know legally if they have to, do you know how they would have to be eighteen?
Yeah, yeah, like, that's what I'm saying, like you graduated, that's somebody who manages a pool.
Yeah.
Okay, you're either almost eighteen or you're. I mean, I was eighteen.
But maybe. Maybe, you know, other ones, I'm just, I'm like Horton or Valley, just to see, just to see what they're, cause I feel like Horton has some young, of course.
You know, Horton's manager, manager is fifty year old and she's a recurring manager.
Right, but they have.
Their kids, while they're.
Managers or head lifeguards or something that, like there's, they have a structure and it's not just.
Right, but I think. I think even her assistant is. Maybe like a teacher or something.
That's why I just.
Oh, you can't, 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 I can't. So we're extending the. Um, so application deadline. At least, and then. I mean, I don't know, I think we're just gonna take the applications if we get them and maybe consider revisions to the application. If we need, like, I, I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I think we should see where we are. We're in April, yeah.
I have one more thing before you.
There's one more thing on page end anyways.
What is it?
Number twenty four is empty, that's Jenna's smart, twenty three, water consumption. You don't wanna talk about it.
It's printed out, you guys can look it up, just have fun. I'll send it, I'll send it out, uh, it's being solid, it has all of the things. Trying to figure out what was going on, so if you go to flow on page for free. Those are the cool ones, I miss you. A million gallons lost on one of them, it's a million between friends. No, it's, uh, because when we went live in September with G Works. It messed up all the accounts with the school, cause they're on the same address. It is in order based on account number. Some zeros that you need to find in December, January, those are people we've moved out of those houses that no longer live there. That we couldn't do prior because G Works, things like that.
Oh, November is the month we do.
Correct.
Do you need summer help?
Do we? That's for you, you're gonna just.
We need to post something like, do you need some help? Painting, planting flowers.
Or if you get that little mower thing, you'll be good, we can just. He gets that, he's gonna, see, look, you really weren't all that bad, but I wanted to.
What do you think on it? We got still two months.
What's, how old do they have to be?
Preferably over sixteen, sixteen and older. I don't know if we actually have anything, and I'm. I need to look that up too, probably, and see if we have anything. Yeah, and what I've been saw, how like. Like mowers, weeders, yeah, I mean, I think sixteen, for sure. Just depends on how, I don't know about your work comp insurance, there are requirements there.
I mean, I. Like there could, like a fourteen year old, could they mow?
No, not. I think it's actually, maybe you'll have labor law.
Yeah.
The equipment.
On their own, come on the side, yeah. Like I can, I can put them out, like on the announcements for them to announce at school, you know, like the city is.
Now, do you have just the generic applications up there?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But I just wanna like make sure, like you have to be sixteen, you know, but maybe. Are we good? So Jeff says yes, put it out there, do we like a motion to approve Jeff for part time help? We would do that one if we have.
There won't be, what a big issue that I got my ass ripped from. It's not up to them. No, but.
Yeah, it's not the business.
And it would, just because it's a, we, we gave a better amount than what he could ever do. You know, it's, it's a like that, they didn't, I didn't care.
Yes, and I, with something that the kid says, well, how much, like what does it take? What would be a, like what would be a?
Sixteen.
What are we paying lifeguards, nine? I think you just could, um.
It will be determined.
Put your experience, make, make sure you put your experience on the application, cause I thought it's gonna be.
Yeah, cause I know. There's, there's some kids that are hard workers and, and you know, I, some people had some doubts on Max, but Max did it. And good job. I assume, yeah, he got paint everywhere on the streets and, you know.
I moved the beat adjourned. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, good night.